Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Welcome, everyone. I call the April 16th, 2025 Select Board Meeting to order at 5:30 PM. We have one change to the agenda. The item under the Town Manager's Report on an update on road projects has been postponed until April 30th, and we're on to announcements. Libby?
This meeting is being video and audio recorded. We have an upcoming open house at the DPW so that people can look at the current facility and learn about the need for a future proposed facility. The open house is this Saturday, April 19th. There will be signage over at the landfill entrance area, and the open house is over at the DPW entrance. We also have tours available to look at the current Our Island home. Our Operations Administrator, Michelle Monroe, can be scheduled to provide a tour, and that information, as well as the information for DPW open houses, on the Select Board's meeting agenda and on the town website. The Finance Committee is holding its annual Town Meeting informational session. That will be Thursday, April 24th at 5:00 PM. It will be Zoom only. We encourage people who might have questions about Finance Committee motions to attend that session. The DPW is doing its annual Seedling Giveaway for Arbor Day this Saturday and Sunday, both days from 8:00 AM to noon at the landfill. And there is a proclamation associated with this for Arbor Day, if the Chair would like to read that.
Sure, I'd be happy to. This is the Town of Nantucket Proclamation. Whereas the National Arbor Day Foundation has declared April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day, and whereas in 1872, the Nebraska Board of Agriculture established a special day to be set aside for the planting of trees, and whereas, trees can be a solution to combating climate change by reducing the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cutting heating and cooling costs, moderating the temperature, cleaning the air, producing life-giving oxygen, and providing habitat for wildlife, and whereas, the citizens of Nantucket recognize the importance, historic, environmental, and aesthetic qualities which trees provide, and whereas, the Select Board supports the protection, preservation, and propagation of all town-owned trees, and whereas, the Town of Nantucket desires to enhance awareness of Arbor Day on the island -- on the island community trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Now, therefore, in recognition of the important role trees play in preserving our unique island heritage, we, the Select Board of the Town of Nantucket in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the Town of Nantucket, and we urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Okay. Oh, shall we -- I'll accept a motion to adopt.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you, Erica, for the reminder. Libby?
Okay, the annual committee board commission vacancy -- appointment process is underway. There's a timeline online. There are committee interest forms available online, and if people are interested, hopefully they are, in volunteering for any number of town boards, committees, and commissions. There's a ton of information online. There are all of the steps in the committee appointment process included in the timeline, and it all culminates with committee appointments on June 25th. We have a digital archive project going on at Plus right now. This is a phased project. We've done some other records in other departments, and now it's the turn of Plus, and I was asked to read a little paragraph about the project. The town's Planning and Land Use Services Department Plus, in partnership with Town Administration, recently kicked off a year-long initiative to digitize its collection of planning, zoning, historic district, and land use documents. The Digital Archive Project, EDocs, will improve accessibility, preserve historical records, and modernize document storage and retrieval via the town's digital document database. In partnership with Iron Mountain Information Systems, collection, preparation, and scanning of these documents will be completed in two phases. Phase 1 runs from April through June 2025, followed by Phase 2 from September through November of 2025. Document access will remain available with brief delays possible during digitization. And there is more information on the town website. And there is no Select Board meeting next week, April 23rd, due to school vacation week. The next board meeting will be Wednesday, April 30th. Annual Town Meeting will start on Saturday, May 3rd at 8:30 AM at the high school, and we were going to show the board some of our informational Town Meeting warrant article videos. I think we'll do maybe three of them now, and the rest at your meeting on the 30th. Just give them a little public exposure. Why don't we -- we'll just go in order. This is Article 10. Article 10 is a capital exclusion, and it is ballot question number five.
Article 10. Nantucket's town departments rely on well-maintained equipment and vehicles to provide essential services. Article 10 proposes funding for necessary capital expenditures to support these operations. This article requests $1.56 million to replace aging vehicles, upgrade equipment, and improve public safety infrastructure. These investments include: DPW, replacing DPW vehicles and equipment, including a 20-year-old front-end loader and a 10-year-old hand-wheeled dump truck, both critical to snow and ice operations, emergency response, and daily tasks. Fire departments: installation of apparatus bay heating systems, which will add suspended heaters in the fire department garage to maintain safe temperatures for medications and IV fluids stored in ambulances, and fire prevention vehicle replacement, replacing a 2015 Ford Expedition with a Ford F-150 pickup equipped for fire prevention services. Public schools: upgrading the school's security camera system to improve campus safety. This funding is contingent on voter approval on a Proposition 2 and 1/2 capital-outlay exclusion at Town Meeting, as well as Question 5 on the election ballot. An affirmative vote at Town Meeting and Town Election will mean that the annual tax bill for an average year-round property valued at $2,58,091 and which qualifies for a residential exemption will increase by approximately $49.36 for one year. Investing in reliable infrastructure ensures that town departments can continue delivering essential services safely and efficiently. Learn more about Article 10 and about how these capital investments support Nantucket. Visit nantucket-ma.gov/atm2025 for details, and please participate in Town Meeting and Town Election. Nantucket relies on its town employees to provide essential services, but the island's housing challenges make recruiting and retaining staff difficult. Article 11 proposes funding for the design and construction of new town employee houses on Wade Drive, including three-family homes and three duplexes with up to 20 bedrooms in total. This project aims to provide stable, year-round housing for essential town workers. This funding is contingent on voter approval of a Proposition 2 and 1/2 exclusion vote at Town Meeting, as well as Question 4 on the election ballot. An affirmative vote at Town Meeting and the Town Election will mean that the annual tax bill for an average year-round property valued at $2,58,091 and which qualifies for a residential exemption will increase by approximately $29.95. This funding will support design, project oversight, permitting, and construction. Providing workforce housing helps the town maintain essential services by keeping employees living in the community that they serve. Learn more about Article 11 and how it supports the town's workforce by visiting nantucket-ma.gov/atm2025, and please participate in Town Meeting and the Town Election.
Just maybe just do one. Anyone?
Nantucket's Department of Public Works keeps Our Island running, but the facility they work from is outdated, unsafe, and inefficient. The current DPW facility is undersized, antiquated, and struggling to meet the needs of our growing community. Limited space for staff, equipment, and materials impacts daily operations, slowing response times, and increasing costs. Without proper storage, expensive equipment is left exposed to the elements, shortening its lifespan, reducing dependability, and dramatically increasing maintenance and repair costs. The facility's layout also makes it harder for crews to work efficiently, affecting everything from road maintenance to storm response. It's time for a modern DPW facility that supports the essential services Our Island depends on.
Good. We can do the rest on the 30th. Okay. The annual Town Election is scheduled for Tuesday, May 20th. Polls will be open from 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM at the high school. We have a couple of other items that came in after the agenda was published. We have a water-based paint collection event this Saturday, April 19th, from 9:00 AM to noon at the DPW office site at 188 Maticet Road, and we want to be clear, this event is not a replacement for the Household Hazardous Waste Collection Event that was canceled last weekend due to boat cancellations, which prevented our contractor from getting here. And lastly, we have a great announcement from our Housing Director.
Good evening, and thank you. I wanted to take the moment to introduce Dylan Metzampel. He's our new Deputy Director of Housing, and he joined our department this week, and he's excited to get started. His background is in urban planning, and he's done a lot of work on community outreach and engagement. So, welcome, Dylan.
Thank you. All excited to be here with you.
Thanks. Welcome aboard. Glad to have you. Okay, that's it. Libby? Yep. So, Select Board announcements comments. Tom, did you want to go?
Yes, I have one. On the behalf of Habitat for Humanity in Nantucket, they have an open -- they have opening for an application for a two-bedroom, two-and-a-half-bath duplex with an unfinished basement that's at 80% AMI, and 80% AMI is $119,750 for a family of four, average, and that's all available on their website. And that has a deadline of June 6th at 5:00 PM to apply, and if anybody, they can reach out at the website, habitatnantucket.org.
Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none, I'm going to go do update on public comment questions. Okay. Make sure I'm on the right date. Okay. So, last week, Rebecca Duame asked about -- asked could the STR permit application process be modified so that applicants provide documentation that they are natural persons LLCs owned by natural persons or investors or entities, and therefore eligible for permits? The town response, excuse me, is Chapter 123-2, Section F of the May 2024 Town Meeting states, "A renewal application shall include an attestation that the short-term rental was operated in accordance with all bylaws and regulations of the town during the previous year." An attestation means that the application and any yearly renewal is being signed by the property owner under pains and penalties of perjury. The requirements of short-term rental eligibility are included in town regulations. As such, a form will be inserted into the GOOS system for the property owner to include that attestation as part of the renewal process. Those renewals are due on November 1st each year. As there is no universally available investor database to confirm intent to act as a real estate investor, and the Health Department is unqualified to evaluate income tax-related information, there is no plan to seek additional written documentation. Caroline Balzer asked, "Can the list of properties holding short-term rental permits requested in a previous FOIA be made public considering the current lawsuit?" The town response is, "The list of properties holding short-term rental permits is a public record. We recommend submitting a public records request through the town's standard process to obtain the most up-to-date list." You can submit a request here, and there's a link on the -- on this page on the town website. Clifford Williams asked about the Affordable Housing Square Footage Price, and the response is that the Affordable Housing Trust does not directly construct housing units. Instead, we collaborate with partner organizations to develop affordable housing. These partners have provided insights into their construction costs, which vary based on project specifics and locations. Many of these projects do not include the land cost or have donated labor and materials to reduce cost. The average cost per square foot for projects over the past five years is $428 per square foot." And then attached to the response is a full chart of the various projects and how those numbers were arrived at. Clifford also asked, "Are there any projections for affordable housing?" And the response is, "The Housing Office actively manages a multi-year development pipeline to strategically increase Nantucket's affordable housing stock and maintain compliance with Massachusetts General Law's Chapter 40B. This law mandates that at least 10% of the municipality's year-round housing units be affordable and listed on the subsidized housing inventory, or SHAI list, maintained by the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities, EOHLC. As of now, Nantucket has achieved 6.55% of this 10% goal. This progress reflects the addition of 206 affordable units to the SHAI list over the last five years." To further this progress, the Housing Office maintains a detailed forward-looking plan that outlines the anticipated timeline for new affordable units to come online. This plan is essential for maintaining our safe harbor status under Chapter 40B, which provides the town with greater control over the comprehensive permit applications when certain affordable housing production benchmarks are met. The following chart outlines our projected affordable housing development pipeline over the next three years, and Erica has that up, but that is also available on this page for further review. Clifford also asked for a balance sheet of actual numbers for affordable housing, and the response is, "In response to this request for a comprehensive balance sheet detailing all affordable housing numbers, we have compiled a snapshot that outlines the funds appropriated to the Affordable Housing Trust and how the funds have been utilized." So, that is also available on the website, and Erica has it up here. Okay. Mary Chalk, regarding the drilling -- the water drilling project, asked if there could be an extension of the comment period or a request for an extension of the comment period, and the town response is that the town has submitted a comment letter, and there's a link on the webpage, and expects project sponsors to be at the April 30th Select Board meeting to review the project, and that is confirmed. They will be here. And she asked, "What channels of communication will you use to alert the public?" This is not a town-sponsored project, and that question should be directed to the project sponsors, and that can be asked on the 30th, and there's a link to how to reach them. "Will the town monitor water quality this summer on the South Shore?" The response is, "The town will monitor water quality at all public beaches in accordance with all standard annual water quality testing program." And regarding Vineyard Wind, "Did Arcadis follow up on the environmental impact report with more thorough analysis?" And the response is, "The results need to undergo quality assurance review and be finalized in order to fully understand the microplastic profile of each of the three sites. Sharing preliminary data before this process is complete is not recommended." And she also asked about our Natural Resources Department results on water quality after the wind blade, and the response is, "UMES, where the testing is being done, anticipates needing until the end of May to complete this work and compile a report due to unforeseen internal challenges and factors related to the current political climate within the university." Okay, and that is it for response to public comment from last week. Okay, I will now open public comment for items not on tonight's agenda. Let me just get the window open for -- I will take Megan Perry online first.
Thanks, Brooke. Can you hear me okay?
Yep, go ahead.
Oh, wonderful. I just wanted to draw the community's attention to the wonderful job that the ZBA did in drafting their final denial decision of the Surfside Crossing project. I thought it was extremely thorough, well-thought-out, and they did a great job defending the town and our community. And I also just wanted to reiterate once again, I really, really hope that the Select Board and any other board, committee, group, municipal, whatever, engaged group does not try to undercut the ZBA again and pull a options agreement scenario or rip away Town Council and remove the ZBA from any appeal that is brought before them. I think that they are doing a great job as the board that oversees the comprehensive permit, and that is what they are allowed to do and supposed to do, and they're the only board that should be doing that. So, I really hope the Select Board supports their ZBA because they put in a lot of time and effort on this, and it would be a real shame if there were any option agreements or whatever it might be titled that is going on and/or removing any appeal and any Town Council or legal council support from the ZBA. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Megan. Clifford?
Clifford Williams. Thanks. That's a lot of information. I'll go over it from last week. I'm also looking at Article 50, which is the Cottage Community, which is almost -- mirrors what I've been trying to do over on 44 Skyline Drive for about three years. So, I guess my question is, if this passes, does Affordable Housing Trust with the town and the Board of Selectmen's and everybody work with you, or is this -- do they pick and choose who they do these cottage communities with, and how do we go about engaging, just like I've tried to do with 44 Skyline Drive under Article 50? Thanks.
Okay. Thanks, Clifford. Next, Burton Ballkine online.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And I'd also like to thank you and the board and the staff. I find the response to public comment is very thorough, and it sounds like you guys are doing a lot of work, and it adds a good layer of transparency to town government. So, thank you for that. Madam Chair, I have a question and a comment about Baxter Road, but it's not specifically tied to the license issue, and I just wanted to make sure this was the proper time to ask my question and comment, or should I wait for the license part of the hearing?
I think if it's not related to the license, go ahead now.
Thank you. My question is, I thought the Select Board's MOU with SBPF was intending to give one voice to the private-public partnership, the one voice being SBPF and to the Select Board. So, my question is, that two principal members of SBPF are appealing the positive order of conditions from the Conservation Commission, and my question is, how is this going to affect the board, your Select Board's partnership moving forward now that they're actually engaging in bringing the Conservation Commission to an appeal? My second question, does this now change the nature of the private-public partnership now that there's actually members of the partnership are suing one another? And then my comment is, I hope this is not the kind of private-public partnership that we move forward into the future, because we're going to need -- I think it's not a bad model, but I think when we enter a memorandum of understanding with the party, that we should all be on the same page, and it feels like when this kind of stuff happens, it's contrary to the spirit of the partnership. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks, Bruce. Brooke?
Brooke Gibbs. How about a couple of good things this week? Recommendation I gave a few weeks ago for the timers on the water heaters island-wide. I did a numbers estimate on the average use of electricity by the water heaters, 40-gallon average size and all that throughout the island, 18,000 approximately, hot water heaters. If you implemented this, it would save us 62.5 million kilowatt-hours. So, that $200 million project you guys have projected in seven years for a third cable to come over could be eliminated before we even need it, or we wouldn't have to spend $200 million in eight years. We could then delay it for however much longer we have by the savings that we would get off of just this. I'd like to also ask for a whiteboard, a dry erase board over here somewhere, so if I have something or people have something they want to show you, numbers-wise or issues-wise or whatever, when they're trying to give you feedback, give us somewhere to present it so that everybody can see it as we show it to the public. And the last thing I'd like to ask is, what's the board's position on illegal immigration and illegal immigrants on the island that are working here, and what plan does the board have and the town have as to what would happen if ICE came here and how we would fill in the hole for all of those jobs and all of those positions that all those people currently hold? Thank you.
Thank you. Let's do Campbell first online and then Amy. Thanks. Campbell, you need to unmute. All right, Amy, why don't you go ahead and we'll see if Campbell comes back.
Hi, Amy Eldridge. I just want to make a few mentions. It was nice to see some dollar amounts that will affect your taxes on some of the videos that you showed this evening, but I want people to think about the amount of money that's coming down the pike this year at this town meeting and the potential for the DPW to come up in the special town meeting in November for the actual building. It's a lot of money, and you think about, like, in my neighborhood, I'm getting all these attachments. If these get approved, all these little fees add up, but I also live in a neighborhood where people are building $10 million properties that affect my assessment, and then you add those together, and then it becomes a reality of whether or not you can afford, as a local islander, whether you're native or not, you know, whether you can afford to keep your home here. So, I just want people to consider those things because not every neighborhood is affected by the assessments as much as some other neighborhoods, but, you know, I got lucky. I'm not -- I inherited a home in Sconset, but I never thought about what was happening out there 25 years ago when we moved there and then inherited the home in 2007, and now I see what's going on in my neighborhood, and people forget that your assessments go up, the town's asking you for all these Prop 2.5 overrides. You add those together, and the cost of living here becomes ridiculous, and then you add insurance for homeowners, and I know the property taxes aren't horrible compared to other places, but there are some people who are finding it very hard to make that balance, especially on fixed income. So, I really want people to think about what we can do, what we can afford, without chasing out any more local families and year-round employees for the town and other businesses in the community. Thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Okay, anyone else? I don't see any hands up. Okay. Oh, hands came up quick. All right. Veronica Bonet next.
Hi, how are you? I just wanted to ask a question about what the Select Board is doing to ensure safety going into the summer with regard to the Vineyard Wind project. This week, the government -- Federal Government Accountability Office finally issued their report on offshore wind, and in addition to it clarifying dangers to navigation and radar, it clearly implicates the Bureau of Safety and Environmental Enforcement as unprepared to regulate these projects. The re-permitting of Vineyard Wind was extremely rushed. It was issued on January 17th in the waning hours of the previous administration. At that time and to this date, the environmental review that was ordered in September by BSEE -- At that time and to this date, the environmental review that was ordered in September by BSEE of Vineyard Wind has not begun. It hasn't commenced. They haven't even agreed on a plan for how to study the environmental impacts of the blade disaster. And it sounds like Nantucket's not ready with their report either. So both of those things together would maybe say, let's wait and not reissue the permit for installing blades. In addition, BSEE promised Nantucket an independent root cause analysis. That is also not complete, not issued, not ready for the public yet. It's clear that the blades that are being taken down and new ones reinstalled are untested. There's no proof that they're safe. There continues to be no plan in place for a pollution event that includes massive amounts of marine debris. And there's no communication plan for it, which we just saw during the lightning strike in late February. Today, at the urging of New Jersey officials, the Department of Interior put a halt on the Empire Wind project that had begun about just a couple days ago. And so you guys say there's nothing you can do, it's a federal project, but other projects seem to go away because of local resistance and local governments saying, hey, this isn't right, the proper work hasn't been done. And that's what's going on here. The proper work has not been done, and I just want to hear back from you guys in terms of what you're doing, talking to your Massachusetts federal delegation, Massachusetts state authorities, to say, hey, how could you have reapproved this on January 17th before the environmental analysis was done? Thank you.
Thank you, Veronica. Campbell, you want to try it again?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, super. I forgot to turn my microphone on. So, one, I'd like to just say thank you to everyone that's keeping track of all the things that need to be kept track of, and two, I really appreciate the responses that have been coming regarding the questions and concerns that people are putting forward during public comment. My comment or question really isn't as monumental as all of those things. I, you know, it's the time to put your kayaks and dinghies and things is coming.
Campbell, Campbell, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. Can you get closer to a microphone? We're having a really hard time hearing you, clearly.
Okay, is that any better?
Marginally.
Marginally? Okay, well, I'm on my knees on my kitchen floor, so it's about as good as you're going to get.
Okay.
So my concern is that at a number of the town-owned beaches where there are racks for kayaks and dinghies, those have not been cleared since the fall, even though there's a sign saying, as of October 15th, all things should be cleared. Now, my question is, do all the kayaks and things that stay over, that overwinter there, do they become like abandoned property that anyone can go and take or move? Or I haven't been able to figure out what's going on there, and I'd appreciate an answer. Thank you.
Okay, Campbell, I think I got it. Thank you. Okay, I think that's the last hand up. Okay, last call for public comment. Okay. We don't have any new business. Next up, we'll take minutes, payroll warrants, and treasury warrants together if the Board so chooses.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're going to take the pending contracts, but I'm going to make, read a quick statement, explanatory statement. There are three employment contracts on the pending contracts list. The contracts for the finance director, the fire chief, are negotiated and recommended by the town manager and are subject to approval by the Select Board. The town manager's contract is negotiated and approved by the Board. Those negotiations occurred in executive session on April 10th. We are pleased to have the department head contracts recommended for renewal and pleased to reach agreement with the town manager on a renewal contract. Once the contracts have been executed by all parties, they will be posted on the town website. So that said, we are going to take the fire chief and the town managers in one motion, and then Dawn is going to recuse on the finance directors. So if I could have a motion on those two?
So moved.
Our second.
Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous. And then Dawn, if you want to step back. Okay, and can I get?
So moved on the finance.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Tom, be you to it. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and that is four with Dawn recusing. Dawn may not be coming back. Okay, next up, we have a request for a taxi cab license legacy transfer for Highland Taxi, and Erica is going to lead us on that.
Thank you. We have had a request from Diane Holgate, whose mother, Diane Coombs, passed away, and Diane held a taxi license for Highland Taxi pursuant to Chapter 367 of the Town Regulations. We can, or you can grant a taxi cab license legacy transfer for that taxi license. She meets all the require, or all the requirements, so I would ask that you approve it.
Any questions from the Board?
I'm of approval.
Okay.
This is common.
Second.
Okay, Tom. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, and our condolences Diane for the reason that you're here, and good luck. Okay. Next up is National Grid, overview of advanced metering infrastructure, also known as AMI, which we, not to be confused with the housing term, and smart meter program, and Erica's going to introduce that as well.
Thank you. On March, on March 10th, myself, project manager Kevin Manuel, and energy coordinator Lauren Sinatra met with members of the National Grid team for an overview of National Grid's new smart meter program. It was agreed at the conclusion of that meeting that it would be helpful for the N-Grid team to come here and make this presentation to the Select Board so that it could get some public outreach and make the community aware of what National Grid's plan is. So I'm going to introduce Lisa Morgara of National Grid, and she is present online with some members of her team, and there's a presentation that we will bring you through.
Thank you, Erica. Appreciate the time. Good evening, everyone. We thank you for the opportunity to share the details of the AMI program, not to be confused with your housing term, the utility business. We love acronyms. This is commonly referred to as our smart meter program. We're hoping we can share with you why we're doing this, when we're starting, how installation goes and what the plans are, and then, and then, most importantly, how we're engaging with the customers in the Nantucket community, and how we'll educate them on the project and the benefits of the meter. So as Erica said, Lisa Morgara, I'm the lead for community engagement for AMI projects and program in Massachusetts. Along with me today is Jesse Harvey, the director of our mass AMI program delivery team, Diana Rivera, who's the lead for our field area network, which is our communications network deployment, and Mark Correa, who's the manager of special operations for our AMI deployment. So I'm going to kick it over.
Hang on one second. Erica, it's scrolling. It's running through.
I don't know why it's doing that.
Hang on one sec. Check, check.
No way.
You know what? I'm just going to do it manually. Go ahead, Lisa.
Okay. Go ahead.
So, yeah, I'm going to turn it over to Jesse Harvey to kick it off and, you know, get into the discussion. I do encourage if we, when we're going through the presentation, if you have a question, either write it down or feel free to ask us, you know, that we really want to be interactive and valuable presentation for all of you.
Okay, thank you.
Awesome. Thank you, Lisa, and good evening. Again, my name's Jesse Harvey. I lead our AMI deployment for Massachusetts, and tonight's just an opportunity to come in early in the process and make sure that we can give you an understanding of what AMI is and our plan for delivering that and deploying that into Nantucket. So we're going to start with just what is AMI and what are we doing with it, and what are some of the features and benefits? And then members of the team will continue to take you through a more detailed view of the devices themselves, and then the timeline and so on. So again, we're here to answer any questions, but we want to make sure we provide a foundational understanding of what the program is and what it involves as well. So with that, if we can go to the next slide. So Lisa said it already, right? Advanced metering infrastructure, it's used synonymously with smart metering, and the only real difference is smart meters are a component of advanced metering infrastructure. There's also the communications network and the backend systems that allow for two-way communication between the utility and our customers, and that's what makes up the full sort of advanced metering infrastructure itself. We are deploying what's called AMI 2.0, and so we'll dive into some of the benefits of that, right? But it is the latest technology when it comes to AMI, and so it comes with some good customer benefits that we'll dive into. If we can go to the next slide, please. So why now? Get asked this a lot, right? So National Grid, we want to be at the heart of a clean, fair, and affordable energy future, and AMI is truly foundational for that, right? It's an enabler across our business in being able to deliver for our customers and manage the grid more effectively and efficiently. And, but beyond that, you know, we've had AMI meters in place for Better Power 20 years, if not longer, and 75% of those meters are coming to the near end of their useful life. And so if we were going to have to do meter exchanges anyways, why go with outdated technology when we can put in these smart meters and provide enhanced benefits to both customers and on customer-facing benefits and grid-facing benefits? We also recognize that we need to evolve, right? Customers' expectations are different, clean energy initiatives are much more critical, and so this allows us to get to a more modern, customer-focused experience and meaningful progress. So it really is an enabler for all the clean energy policies and changes we're going to be seeing and working through over the next few years and several years. I mentioned earlier that we're moving to AMI 2.0, which just means it's the latest, but National Grid is the first utility to use this Revellometer, and it does include new features around data visualization, personalized energy insights and tips, and integrates energy efficiency and demand load management programs altogether. You'll hear us refer to it as grid edge technology. One major thing is it does give us insights at the grid edge, and so it provides a lot more detail and a lot more information, and it's more sophisticated overall. So we want to enable the energy transition for all, right? So that also includes the ability to enable more sophisticated rates around time of use or EV and so on. You just can't do that with our existing meters. Then they're not, they don't have the smart technology that allows us for that technology to be put in place and enable rates. But it also puts us in a better spot when it comes to distributed energy resources and help lower energy consumption, peak reduction, manage bills better. We want to deliver efficiently for our customers, right? So now customers will have personalized experiences and products and quicker responses during the entire customer lifecycle. It, you know, it should allow us to respond much quicker to both connects and disconnects, outages, and other, other customer interactions that we have in that, in that space. It helps us to grow our organizational capability as well, right? So enhances the network planning processes, and I already mentioned, right? Gives us information on the edge of the grid, so we will have more data and better quality data that helps us to make better decisions and be more effective and efficient in managing the grid. And it empowers our people, right? So more specific and quicker data on outages should shorten response times, give us more insights into specifically where the problem is, and also not waste truck rolls, because we'll know when there's an actual outage, and we'll get into some of that a bit later. And then real-time data for customers and enhanced information management on the backend as well. If we can go to the next slide, thank you. So talked a little bit about, well, if we, if we put this in a smarter, stronger, and cleaner sort of phrasing or framework, data insights, right? Customers will have access to near-real-time data, 15-minute intervals. So every 15 minutes, you'll be able to see a snapshot of your last 15 minutes and how much energy you used via dashboard. So normally, customers have to wait, they get a, they get a reading or a bill, which gives you a snapshot from what they used one month compared to the next, and it's very difficult to have a true understanding of when you're using that data or using that energy and how to manage your energy differently. And now this helps put more control in the customer's hands. They'll recognize patterns, they can make different decisions. They might not recognize when certain appliances turn on, they see a spike, and maybe, you know, it's time to update that appliance or use it differently. It makes us stronger in terms of grid monetization. So real-time alerts and alarms allow for quicker responses. So in today's world, generally speaking, we don't know if there's an outage until a customer calls in, and now these meters will alert when there's a power outage, and it will also let us know when the power comes back on. And so, one, we can respond quicker, we'll know how many customers are impacted based off the number of meters that shut off, and two, we'll know when customers are all back on, and if there's any stragglers, we'll also recognize that, and it helps us to get to those customers faster as well. We'll also be able to measure voltage and remotely connect and disconnect for new service requests. So it really is a game changer in terms of some of that automation and information to modernize our grid. And then when it comes to cleaner, right? Enabling net zero, information from the smart meters will help customers make more energy-efficient choices and help them save on their bills by using less energy. Again, at the start, you'll have the 15-minute increments at some point down the line, you'll have more sophisticated applications that will be available that will get you down to the appliance level and help you support, you know, all your cost-benefit analysis if you were to decide to go to heat pumps or replace your refrigerator and things like that, and plus just using your energy more efficiently as well. And if we can go, thank you. So benefits, functionality benefits in AMI, right? From a customer perspective, I've already talked about it, but you get significantly more detailed usage information, and so you make better choices, you can integrate smart thermostats and other smart devices and appliances, and you have the ability to set up usage alerts, which can help you manage your power differently, your energy usage differently, and budget. Something that I think is very new for us is electric remote connect and disconnect. So you no longer have to wait till the next technician is available, we'd be able to just turn you on remotely or shut it off remotely, so if somebody's moving out or needs that turned off. And then I sort of alluded to this earlier, right? The potential for more sophisticated rates, primarily time-of-use rate pricing options. I do want to stress there that the implementation or the installation of smart meters doesn't automatically give that option. That would be enabled, and down the, down the line, we can work with the Department of Public Utilities to design and implement those types of rates, but you'd have the technology that would allow that. From a National Grid perspective, over-the-air meter reading and investigation, so much fewer truck rolls when it comes to just reading meters or turning customers on or off. You know, I mentioned earlier how we would get outage notifications, that the meters, if they lose power, have enough to send a last gasp to say, hey, there's an outage, and that should help us in both blue sky response and storm response. And then we're going to have granular outage data at the meter itself and timestamps of when the last meter, when the meter last communicated. It just gives us much more detailed information to understand who's off, who's on, how long, and respond accordingly. We will also have some alerts and alarms, so if a meter is overheating or it's been tampered with, there'll be a notification as well and allow us to respond quickly to that as well. And then power quality information, right? It provides operational benefits by verifying we're supplying adequate, reliable, and uninterrupted power. So again, when it comes to our asset planning and management, we'll have a lot more information than we have previously that allows us to make better choices and better decisions. So with that, I'm actually going to hand it over to Diana Rivera, who's the program manager for our field area network deployment, and she'll walk you through some of the AMI systems and the devices.
Thanks, Jesse. Good evening, everyone. Diana Rivera here, and as Jesse said, I am leading the field area network deployment of this program. So I'm here to talk a little bit about the devices themselves and how this all works together. As you can see here depicted on the right, we have three different device types that constitute our field area network, which we often refer to as FAN. Lisa said we love acronyms. So the field area network is comprised of these three different devices, a Cisco IR8140 device, which is installed A Cisco IR eighty-one forty device, which is installed near substations, uh Landis and Gear Gateway, and a Landis and Gear Mesh Extender. The gateway and the Cisco device are the devices that are collecting the meter data and transmitting that information back to National Grid's backend system for processing and billing. Your Landis and Gear Mesh Extenders just really help extend the mesh network. And as you can see in the diagram, um, to the left here, it's depicting how the network and the meters not only talk to themselves, but they have the ability to talk to mesh extenders, to talk to Cisco devices or gateways. Um, the network is built and being designed so that the meters can talk to each other, can talk to different devices, have alternate pathways to get the data back to National Grid. Um, and we also have gateway redundancy. So when it comes to Nantucket specifically, if we can move over to the next slide. The network design that we originally put in place called for thirty-nine um of these FAN devices to be installed on island. Um, fourteen of them being four seventeen being gateways, um and eighteen being uh mesh extenders. We don't have any planned Cisco devices for Nantucket. After we did a redesign of our network design, we were able to reduce that down to thirty-five devices by just simply um changing how how some of our installation standards. So fewer devices as a result. Um, further, on the next slide, I go into a little more detail sort of where we are to date. Um, right now, we have total of thirty-five devices that are planned for the island. We have currently installed eight devices, and we've been able to successfully communicate with those devices. Um, again, these are just FAN devices that are installed on existing poles. Um, we have provided the locations to those devices. For the remaining sites and devices, we completed some resurveys. The purpose of that was to really try and 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 get a a thorough assessment of our infrastructure in the field. Um, take a look to see if we have any options um for installation of these devices um that wouldn't require new pole sets or new infrastructure. Um, so we did that and we completed resurveys. So of the twenty-seven remaining devices um planned for the island, um ten sites are still in design and redesign. Um, we have five locations that are requiring poles. Um, only one is a new pole set. I just want to clarify that. And then the other four are just um calling for taller poles, and these are in Verizon set pole areas. We have another seven locations that are in permitting um and not ready yet. And then five locations that are ready to be installed once we receive um the okay and the approval. So from a from a field area network standpoint, um, these devices talk to each other. And before we can begin our meter deployment efforts, we do need a network that is um connected and enabled um to be able to get that meter data from the meters in order for us to successfully bill customers. So that's um the field and area network piece of our deployment efforts. If there are any questions?
Any questions? Matt?
Yeah, how big are these units? I'm assuming they're on telephone poles. Are they a foot by a foot or how big are they?
Yeah, they're uh eighteen by eighteen. It's a square box and they're about six inches in depth. And they go ten, ten to twelve feet high installed on the pole.
Great, yeah, I assume that that's they're not that big.
Yeah, correct.
Right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, I think we're good for now.
So Mark is next, if you can go to the previous screen. Yeah, so uh Mark Correa is next. He's going to take us to the the deployment and um those plans.
Thank you, uh, in good evening. Can everybody hear me okay?
We can, go ahead.
Thank you, uh, Mark Correa, manager of special uh operations for National Grid's AMI project. Uh, wanted to give a a little bit of a a mile-high view um that does include Nantucket. In terms of how we plan to deploy meters, there is an order of operations um that is required. So as Diana alluded to, our FAN network needs to be built out primarily up and running. Uh, then we start installing meters after a period of a couple of months, and we're we're satisfied that the network is stable. We are currently operating in the light blue area that's in a box and the kind of teal-green color. Um, that's to the right. Yeah, we're in, so we're in the South Shore in the central part of Massachusetts. Uh, we're in the neighborhood of roughly twenty-four thousand meters completed so far. Um, and as referenced uh in in the plan someplace, uh, we're we're planning to touch somewhere between one point four and one point five million meters uh through the end of calendar year twenty-seven. So our current plan for Nantucket would follow completion of the FAN device buildout that's underway now with a tentative onset of meter deployment uh in the October twenty-twenty-five timeframe. All that's subject to revisions based on how things progress with buildout uh and any other unforeseen factors that we just may not have included in the deployment schedule. Our goal is to make use of more of the offseason time uh on Nantucket to have fewer disruptions, uh less traffic to deal with in just a generally quieter time of the year uh to get utility work done. The it's a little bit busy on the slide. I recognize that the colors and the arrows, but it's just kind of designed to to give an overview of movement across uh National Grid's Massachusetts geography. And we can move to the next slide. Uh, so currently, again, we are operating in the central Massachusetts city of Worcester and in the Brockton, Mass area. Uh, both of those have been ramped up over the past six months or so, uh roughly twenty-four thousand meters to date. And again, Nantucket's forecast uh is for later this year in calendar year twenty-twenty-five, providing all the 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 kind of prerequisites things have been met as far as uh network buildout and stability. Uh, and and we're looking roughly around six months um of of progress to get Nantucket completed. Um, again, and that's, you know, forecasted to complete before the busy season starts uh in the springtime of calendar year twenty-twenty-six.
Matt, may I ask a question? Does that represent one hundred percent of the meters on Nantucket?
It represents nearly one hundred percent. Um, there will be a few outliers that we're aware of right now that are the largest commercial and industrial customers. Uh, for instance, um, the hospital could be a couple of the schools. And those just have fairly intricate requirements for data uh that are part of the rate structure. Uh, it's not to say that we won't get to those. We're just not prepared to offer those technicalities today. But the vast majority of uh customers, both commercial, industrial and residential, uh will be touched as part of the buildout.
Thank you.
So um back up. Up, um, so customer and community engagement. Um, so meters are going in and uh, you know, for most people, a meter is a meter. Um, it's not going to look any different on their home. Uh, it's going to have some different labeling, but what's inside the meter is what's exciting. And um, we need to educate the customers about this. We need to educate them, you know, same thing, we're telling you why we're doing it, uh the importance of it. Um, but then um we have a strategy together, uh pulled together to um to engage customers and educate them along the way. So our first phase is the uh customer community awareness. So there'll be um a ninety-day campaign of some sort where you would hear maybe a radio ad, a Spotify ad, uh something out of a pop-up on a social media talking about smart meters and National Grid. It's at this point that we'll start to engage more closely with the municipal leaders. So um, excuse me, Erica and and others, and just um get a little more definite plan on how and when we want to start this. Um, the second part is the deployment, and as we're preparing customers for the installation. So we have a sixty, thirty, ten-day approach that I'll go into a little more detail the next slide um where we um slowly begin to to give customers more and more information about the meter. And then finally, um empowerment and enablement. Now they have the meter, and we don't want to lose sight of all the great things that it does. So it's continued education on um the capabilities of the meter and how they can benefit. Future, like Mark had said, time of use rates. And so once we get into that um statewide, then, you know, there'll be some more uh education that would come to customers. So our timeline, um, so listen, test, learn is an approach that we've used. Um, we're, you know, we're sending, we're using this information, we're listening, um, we're testing how it works and we're learning. And we've, we're um constantly uh adding to our frequently asked questions. We're making sure language is clear. We've used a lot of research that has been done on um, you know, approachment and uh display for the information. So it's clear to customers. But uh, so as I mentioned, the ninety-day outreach would be um, you know, a community-wide. Sixty days prior to their scheduled meter install, each customer would get either a direct mail letter or email. Depends on their preference of um communications from National Grid. Basically says, um, you know, smart meters are coming, gives a little bit of a a preview of what they do, um, just starts to build the excitement. Uh, thirty days prior, um, bill inserts, uh email or letter will come again. There's a welcome brochure, which is like AMI one oh one. What what the meter is, what to expect during installation, bunch of frequently asked questions, everything the customer might need to answer questions um about the about the project. Ten days prior, um, all customers will receive a text, email or a robo-call, letting them know that we'll be there in the next few weeks to put their meter in. And then on the day of the install, customers get a door hanger, uh, um, whether they're home or not, just basically saying the meter was installed. Gives them a QR code to go to our smart meter page for more information. And then post-installation, they do get a letter as well, and we start to, we start the uh engagement, excuse me, the further engagement and education for our customers on the meter. So here's some example of some of the customer engagement pieces that we use. So the sixty-day letter is like a a broad, you know, it's coming. Um, thirty days prior, we get the a smart meter will arrive soon, so people know it's close. And uh, like I said, there's a brochure, there's uh what to expect they have installation. Uh, but the bottom there, there's a uh bill insert. Uh, if you go to the next page. Um, the welcome brochure, like I said, is a is, you know, available online and on paper for, depending on how customers want delivery. Um, gives all the information on the meter itself, the installation, how to opt out if customers don't want it, um, the questions and and more awareness and education. And then again, the door hanger, which is there leave behind on the day of the install. So as
Before you go on, I have another question. Uh, what's the typical power downtime uh for an installation?
Uh, five minutes, Mark?
Less, it's probably two.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
So not to not to say they won't be at the home longer than that. Um, and I I always like to downplay it. It's basically unplugging one meter and plugging in another. And in simplicity and, you know, uh, for the everyday person, that's really what happens. Um, they're going to remove the old meter, you know, make sure everything is is set inside, everything is safe. They would install the new meter, do some testing and then seal it. Um, that we will be knocking all of our installations so that the internal crew would knock on doors prior to um removing the meter. Um, we've had customers say, hey, I'm on a call, I can't take the interruption right now. Can you come back? The crew can circle back. Um, customers that aren't home, you don't need to be home for the install. Um, you might notice some blinking clocks when you get home, but um the customers don't need to be home.
Thank you.
And then um moving into some of the exciting stuff that Jesse mentioned earlier. So we have um little energy management tools. And so customers don't need to subscribe to any uh anything other than, you know, work with their National Grid account. So the the My Account portal within their National Grid account will show you, show customers this granular data. They can see what they're using in the course of a day, as you can see in that picture. Um, that's a course of fifteen-minute increments across a day. You could do a a day view, you could do a month view. Um, and so building awareness, and I think for customers, looking at that, you know, the chart there, the 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 usage is pretty stable, except for that middle area. So self-realizing, what did I do during that timeframe? And that would have drawn up those to go up, my usage to go up. Oh, I started cooking dinner. I threw a wash-in, the kids were watching TV, using their gaming system. Oh, my daughter took a shower, was blow-drying her hair. So all those things, you may say, oh, so that's how my load was affected by this. So it's it's teaching customers um that what appliances and and, you know, learning from their experience and the what they're using in their house and how their data would be reflected. Again, not encouraging people to stop doing anything that's energy-intensive, but if you're just trying to plan accordingly, um, manage a budget, manage your usage, um, this is a better way and a better tool for you to do that. Um, the app, the portal gives you your highest use days, so it gives you the five highest days of use. Um, you know, customers, you know, with our AMR meter, we would read it on March first, and we read it on April first, and we know what the difference is by subtracting March from April. Um, now we, now you know what you use each day in the month. And so instead of opening that bill at the end of the month and saying, when did I use all this electricity? You can look here at these five days. And then you could, you know, kind of go back and say, what did I do on these days? We had company, I was cooking, I was this. Um, and it's okay to have those days, but if you're trying to limit and you're trying to manage your usage to manage a budget, this will certainly help. And next slide. Um, as Jesse also mentioned, customers can set high-usage alerts and they can get a weekly energy summary. So um customers can, if you're using twenty percent or more from the same time the previous year, and obviously, some of that data has to build by the time, um, you know, as we're building data, we're building these alerts as well. Um, they get an alert saying, you know, you're using more than you did at this time last year. Or I believe there's alerts that can be for, you know, you're using, it's more this month than you were last month. Um, just visibility for customers. We didn't have that before. We didn't have the ability to to say to a customer mid-month, you're using more than you did last month, which is going to result in a higher bill. Um, but now the tools are there. Um, and as Jesse mentioned, you know, really exciting is uh the Sense application. So in inside the meter is a built-in Sense module, and Sense is an appliance-level monitoring tool um currently in development with National Grid, but it will be offered to all customers at no cost. So there's an app that you would download, um, you create an account, and you can see your electric household load broken down by um appliances. Um, takes time for them to the app to learn the appliances, but there's all this predictive analysis that's done on the load shape of the dishwasher, a washer, dryer, a stove and et cetera. Um, and it's a, you know, a great way to see what's using the most energy. What's interesting is we had a, uh, you know, an employee that was testing this application and said, I was shocked to see what the what the usage was in my house for the items that are considered always on or the things that were always plugged in. And so again, and self-realizing um what your actions in the home will how the results in your electricity usage and therefore your bill um are really important. And we'll continue to educate customers on that. So next slide, unless anyone has questions?
Hang on one second, we have a question for someone from the public.
Sure, go ahead.
Yeah. I was, I was just wondering what the value of, I understand on the front side what the value is to the grid to understand the usage. What is the value of the data gleaned? And well, what is the compensation to the homeowner? Because those numbers that you guys get from them as to their usage on particular even appliances, uh, it's, on one hand, it's good for public knowledge, but on the other hand, it's slightly an invasion of privacy. So how are you guys compensating the homeowner for sharing the data on their individual appliance usage going forward or in general?
Okay, so we can't see the appliance-level information. Um, that's in the app. Um, National Grid doesn't have access to that, our call center rep. So if a customer to call in and say, it looks like my refrigerator is using the most, the call center rep will not be able to know that. They don't have access to the Sense application. Um, we do have access to the My Account portals to walk customers through understanding. Um, those are increments of time and helping them with the, you know, explaining that these high-usage days will contribute to the high usage, which will contribute to a higher bill.
I have one other question.
Sure.
Uh, does the system detect bad grounds of at the at the residence or at the business or wherever the meter is installed? Because on Nantucket, we have Cause on Nantucket, we have a ton of corrosion caused to bad grounds, which then draw on the system with nothing being on, only because the ground or the neutral is bad. Does this help alleviate that or does it address it? Or can you guys develop something that does detect bad grounds in houses? So that things like fires are prevented from happening?
So I can take that question. We are just beginning the process of understanding the value of some of the alerts and events that we will have new granular capability of information coming in, something we've never had before. And I specifically can't answer the grounds question. It's an excellent question. We do, we will have the capability of voltage monitoring, both swells and sags. We will have capability of over current. We will have the capability of micro arcing. So those are the, the first kind of components we will take in as information to better understand what's going on out there. So the, the answer is a maybe, but I can't answer definitely for you that, that particular question about grounds today.
Good.
Thanks, Brooke.
Thank you.
Can I just, I've, I've participated in, I think it's called Connected Solutions. I have smart thermometers and thermostats and have been involved with that. And they are able to turn down or turn off my heating or cooling. And that only happens a handful, never, nothing ever happens in the winter. It only happens a handful of times in the summer. We can override it if it's uncomfortable, but we usually don't. But they pay you 20 bucks. They don't pay you much. But what's interesting is the busy time here is the weeks that you'd expect. It's like 4th of July, beginning of August, and it's the really hot days. And it's the time when everyone is getting back from the beach and you're cooking dinner. And all those things are happening at home is when they control the meter a little bit. And so, so I think, so, so that's sort of to answer your question of, you know, how does it happen? You can opt in and get paid a little bit now and learn something. I think what this is, is pretty exciting because we all saw the article in the paper today about the next, you know, we've got the next cable and $200 million and everything else. I think that, you know, being able to look at this and push, you know, washing dishes into later in the night or picking other, you know, sort of incentivizing people to do things when there's less demand on the system and doing something like, you know, Brooke was saying earlier, if we could get all the water heaters hooked up or different things like that, you know, we use batteries and, you know, have off-peak hours and put energy into batteries. There's a lot of things that, you know, having this in place will allow the energy office and customers who want to do it to try to do. So it is pretty exciting. So.
Yeah, and that's a, that's a great point. Connected Solutions is a, as a program in the National Grid Office to customers. We don't control your meter, but we send, we control your thermostat. So never in the meter would we shut off your power because we think you're using too much or we need, you know, more somewhere else. But the Connected Solutions overrides a thermostat. And so we talked about being able to integrate smart appliances and a smart thermostat into your home and connect it with the meter. So that's something you could certainly do. And again, you know, it's those peak days. Unfortunately, it's that, you know, 2:00 PM to 6:00 PM when everybody's either getting home from school or work or their beach or whatever it may be, that the increase in power goes up. Those are called peak hours. And any way we can manage those peak hours by, you know, encouraging customers to use less is better. So, you know, customers with this, with the My Account Portal tool will know what they're using. And if they are trying to prevent the, you know, the peak load and trying to keep steady with their load, they'll be able to tell, get the reaction when they turn on the air conditioner, what the reaction to their energy usage is or, or other appliances. So again, during those hours, we always encourage people to do their energy intensive activities off hours at night. And any of those things that you do to help shift that peak load to another time is obviously really helpful. So this AMI meter would be able to help, you know, integrate any of your smart appliances to, you know, run at night or, you know, run a different time of the day.
I'm going to ask you guys, there's a few people who want to ask questions and I, I want to give the presenters an opportunity to finish their presentation before we take more questions. I think that might be, I don't know how, how much more you have. Would you guys prefer to do that?
So, yeah, I mean, we can take, so what I have next is some frequently asked questions that we highlighted based on just some feedback we've had. If you want to, we can glance at them. I don't know if they'll answer some of the questions. If this is made available to the select board and members, then you could share this with them. But I can go over a couple of them that are super, you know, seem to be super popular these days. The first one being, is this meter safe? So a lot of misconception around smart meters being, causing fires, you know, causing the fires in California, causing, you know, issues with the RF waves. And so the, the RF levels in the smart meter, as you can see in the, in the depiction below, are far less than the wifi signal in your house, a microwave oven or your cell phone. And so as far as, you know, customers that have RF sensitive sensitivity, you know, we do allow customers to opt out. It comes with fees. But, you know, we're, we're trying to provide customers with the, the facts about the meter, what we know and everything they need to make their own educated decision on whether this is the best thing for them. Of course, we want them to use it. We think it's great benefits. But, you know, people were concerned about safety. We haven't seen any issues with fires. We haven't seen any issues with RF levels being higher. Everybody's meter right now has RF levels, all meters do. So this is certainly not anything higher than you're, you have on your house already. And a second popular topic is about the data, the security of your data. And so I think Diana mentioned in her presentation, how the meter reads the data and it flows through those devices back to National Grid. The data meaning your usage data, not your social security number, not, you know, your phone number, your email address. It's usage data. And it comes with a customer number that's encrypted. So it doesn't, you know, as far as all of it being private, it's as private as it can be. Again, it's only energy data and we keep it confidential. We, it's obviously in our portal. So you can discuss it with your, with the call center rep if you have a question or need some assistance or it needs some advice. But it's not, it doesn't go anywhere else. And we use that data obviously for your billing. So those are two of the, I would say the most frequently asked questions. Again, like is it reliable? Yes. I mean, the Northeast is the last part of the country to get smart meters. I think I saw a statistic that 72 or 75% of the country has smart meters. And when I talk about we're getting a smart meter or we're doing them here, you know, I have relatives in California and Texas and Arizona and they say, you don't have a smart meter. So although the Northeast is always proactive in many things, we are behind in the smart meter area. So again, time gift to be home at the install. You don't need to be home. As we said, it's a quick outage. People might notice a blinking clock when they got home. I thought this one might be important with seasonal residents on the island. So if I'm not home for the media installation, what can I expect? And so you don't need to do anything different. We talk, it's the same meter outage. We say less than 10 minutes. Mark says, you know, two, it's closer to two. So it would be like them having a power blip almost. The only thing I think that might be affected is alarms. Like if someone has an alarm system, that outage could, could trigger an alarm. Other than that, there's no difference. So we're not going to shut off anything for a very long time. So it would just be that short outage. And again, they would come home and find the blinking clocks or the, you know, whatever. And then another one was, will my house generator be impacted? And since we have to interrupt the service, but it's, like I said, it's less than 10 minutes. It's likely your generator will turn on unless there, you have an override. Or you, when you, when they come to the door to tell you they're, they're going to install the meter, you have a way to shut the generator off. So if, you know, if it's turned off, then it'll, you know, everything will go as normal. If there, if the customer's not home, then probably the generator will turn on temporarily. It will, it will detect the outage and turn on. Same with solar panels. So people, if anyone has solar panels, so once the installation's complete, the panels, you know, they'll turn off when we're doing the installation and they'll turn back on. And then a lot of customers concerned, well, I don't have wifi or I don't have internet. So I can't get the account. I don't have wifi in my house. You don't need the wifi. It's, we're, we're building that wifi network, as Diana mentioned, the fan network. And so it doesn't utilize a customer's wifi or internet connection. You would need a connection, whether it be at your house or at the library or wherever, to access your usage through the My Account Portal. But other than that, there's nothing that's used in your home wifi. And I think there was one more page. Will I be charged for the meter? There's no direct charge to customers. We're not charging. This is the cost that's built into our rates as part of the 2020 rate case that we had. So customers have already begun to pay for some of the upgrades that we had through that rate. And if, for customers that are concerned with us coming to replace the meter and, you know, keeping the meter or not replacing it or shutting it off, there's no, there's no impact. So bill status is not impact this. Everybody gets a new meter. This is a first and foremost, a meter replacement project. And we're taking out a new meter and putting a new. It doesn't matter if you owe money or you have a discount on your account or whatever it may be, you'll still get a new meter. And I did provide a link at the bottom where, to our smart meter page, where you can get a lot of information, a lot more FAQs, the customer marketing materials and our brochure. And happy to take some questions if time allows.
Yep. We do have someone who wants to ask a question. She's coming in. Mike.
Hi, Amy Eldridge. So currently the meters that we have now, are they only like RF activated when the truck drives by and scans your meter from the street? So the new meters that go in are going to be chronically running 100% of the time for data going to these different locations all over the island. Is that correct?
So I can take that. If you are a residential customer today, most likely you have what we refer to as an AMR meter. AMR, again, we love the acronym to National Grid, Automated Meter Reading. And so there's a transponder built into the meter. We collect data only once a month on typically a drive-by basis. However, that encoder-receiver-transmitter is always on. So there, there is an RF component that exists today and has since you've had that meter. The replacement meter that's intended is also always on. And again, the RF components are very, very low. Lisa went through some of the comparators that are most commonly found. The only difference really is how often the new meter reports into the head-end systems. That's a lot more frequent. It's several times a day. It records blocks of time in what we call intervals, 15 minute blocks of time and checks in on average, probably four times a day as opposed to once a month on a vehicle drive-by system. So it's just, it's the frequency of data transfer. Is that the only significant change?
And you guys have said that it's, it's safe, like it's comparative to other devices and things that we have in our home. Because I just, red flag, you know, we have issues with PFAS and now you're adding this and I just worry about all that kind of stuff. I mean, our cell phones can kill us and, you know, so just something I want to ask this, if there's any, you know, health risks to these things and can people opt out of these things?
Yeah. So it's, it's a, it's a fair question, right? It, it's a, it's a commonly utilized frequency in terms of FCC signal regulation. More specifically, it's the 900 megahertz band of regulated frequency. And in comparison to things like signal strength, and this is, this is where folks, I think, kind of like to understand comparators, you know, we've kind of listed those in comparators to what are, what are commonly utilized for many people today. Whether that's a, a mobile device that everybody has a growing, growing attachment to, whether that's wifi signal, things like that. It's, it's, it's a, it's a low output device. We can't say that there's none, you know, we're not going to be dishonest about it. But it's a, it's a low powers signal and it's on a regulated frequency. And into your, your second question, you know, a critical component of National Grid's filing is that there is a consumer bill of rights. And if you had a specific sensitivity to electromagnetic fields, for instance, you do have the ability to opt out as a residential customer. And the, the provision of the opt-out feature, and this is, this is part of the filed tariff, you would still receive a new meter. We've emphasized this a couple of times. At its core, this is a meter asset replacement program. For folks who did formally opt out, you would receive a non-communicating meter. There is, there is no head-end connection. We don't even have the capability of the current drive-by system. This would end up being a manually read meter. However, in recognition of that, there would be incremental fees associated with that, which, which are also part of the approved filing.
I'm just asking for, so people can have full information. I'm not like worried about it, but it was just something that crossed my mind. Thank you.
Yeah, it's a great, it's a great question and your concern is the concern of many. So as you can tell, Mark is pretty versed in answering it. Again, we're trying to give you that factual information. We're not hiding that there's an RF factor to the meter. There's RF that submits from many other common things, even the earth, as I found out. So, you know, taking it into comparison, but giving you this information, well, we're considered factual information so that you can make your own decision based on, you know, the information that we're providing. There's, you know, a lot of misconceptions out there and we're trying to, to just make sure that you have the correct information to make that decision. As far as opting out, like Mark said, customers have the ability to do that if they so choose.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, I think that's it. Thank you very much. It was very informative. Really appreciate it. And it's obviously the beginning of a longer term. We'll be hearing more from you guys, all of us. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
And if anything comes up, Erica, you can feel free to reach out and I can get some additional questions answered for you.
Great. Thanks, Lisa.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, you guys. Okay, next up, we have the Housing Office, request for a letter of support to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts Executive Office of Housing and Living Mobile Communities regarding local, local preference, preference at Tacoma Green. Kristy?
Thank you. So this project is getting ready to close. This is Tacoma Green, which is 64 units, rental units over at Six Fairgrounds Road. And what we're requesting is a letter from the Select Board that supports their request for local preference and just to take a step back and explain this to the community. When the units that are income restricted at 80% of area median income or below go out to lottery, anybody can apply for those lottery, those units. And so what this local preference does is request that 70% of those units stay within local preference. I'm getting a little feedback, which means people who either are current residents of Nantucket, employees of the town, employees of local businesses that are located within Nantucket or households that have children attending a Nantucket public school. So this letter is similar to what we've done with other applications such as Wiggles Way and Habitat for Humanity. And we've been successful so far in having EOHLC support us in our local preference ask, which is not something that's common across the state. I've prepared the letter that's in your packet, very similar to other letters that we've requested, illustrating the local need for these units to be able to go to local employees and residents on the island. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
Yep. Any questions from the board or a motion? Matt?
I'll move approval.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Kristy. And then next up is, you can do the request for a Select Board member for the RFP.
Perfect. So last fall, the Housing Office released a request for proposals for the construction, the development of 135 and 137 Orange Street, 16 Vesper Lane and 12 and 12 R Bartlett Road. The request for proposal timeline just ended and the bids were due roughly three weeks ago back to the Finance Department. And we're looking to put together a RFP's review committee to review this bid. We received one bid and we're looking to review this bid. I did speak with a few members and I would like to propose having Dawn be the I did speak with a few members and I would like to propose having Dawn be the Select Board rep for this subcommittee.
Do we need consensus or do we need a motion? Okay, so do we have a motion to appoint Dawn?
I'll move that.
Second? Dawn, are you willing to take the position? I should have asked that first.
Kristy asked him earlier.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, Dawn, for volunteering to do that.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Kristy. Okay, next up is discussion regarding the terms and conditions for license with SBPF for the use of town property for erosion control project at Baxter Road.
Who's going to take it?
I'll start a brief intro. So as the board will recall, there was a warrant article on the 2024 Annual Town Meeting Warrant in accordance with the Town Code, which requires that the usage of town property for erosion control structures requires a vote of town meeting. That article was, taken no action because we were kind of waiting at the time for a notice of intent to be acted upon by the Conservation Commission for the project. And it wasn't ready at that point. Fast forward to recently and the project, and I'm very much oversimplifying it a little bit, but the project has been approved by the, by the Conservation Commission. It was a joint notice of intent by the town and SBPF, Wisconsin Beach Preservation Fund. And what we have been internally discussing is the preparation of a license with SBPF for the use of the town property as required by the Town Code. And there is an article on the 2025 Annual Town Meeting Warrant, Article 81, which would authorize the Select Board to allow the use of the town property for this erosion control project. So the discussion has been, do we do the license before town meeting? Do we do it after town meeting? What will we tell the voters at town meeting about the license terms and conditions? So the internal decision, more or less, was to have started a discussion with SBPF about conceptual terms and conditions, bring it to the board for a public discussion, allow for some public input and, and feedback. And if it was seeming like there could be an agreement before town meeting, either tonight or at the board's meeting on April 30th, that could be something to bring to town meeting. So the, sort of a team of myself, Vince Murphy and Mr. Fee met earlier this week with SBPF representatives and our council and talked over, it was very much just a talk-over discussion of potential terms and conditions for a license. And I, I would say, as a result of that meeting, there was a lot of thought that both sides were going to continue giving to it. There were concerns expressed as to whether or not we'd be ready to have a license to present to town meeting or should we put this off? And I think that we all on our team generally agreed, this needs to go before the board for discussion. And that's where we are. I don't know if you want to add anything, Vince, to that. The, the terms and conditions that have been drafted, and I would say, when I say drafted, they are not, you all are just seeing, just saw them in your packet earlier this week. They were a compilation of a lot, a lot of conceptual items that Vince put together as a result of comments and discussions that have happened at Concom meetings during the deliberation of the notice of intent application. They are some items that were in the prior license, kind of a kitchen sink approach as we discussed it earlier.
Thank you, Libby. Vince Murphy, Natural Resources Department. Just to kind of continue that very gently. We went through this literally line by line. The best part about this was that there was generally quite broad consensus and agreement on the terms of the license. There's one or two sticky points, one or two things that need editing. There's one or two things that we're going to have to work through, but they're very small items by, by comparison. So there's general agreement on the broad concepts in this. If the board would like to talk about any one of them or if you'd like me to walk through them, that's fine. Just to say that there's things, like Libby said, that came up through the development of the notice of intent, there's things that are also reflected from the previous MOU and a previous license. And there's also one or two things that are just high-level conceptual ideas about potentially getting, or working to have SBPF work with the town for the alternative access project as well. That wasn't something that was in other concepts, but it was a gateway to try and get that project moving in a different direction and a positive direction. Just another idea, again, a concept. And if the commission doesn't like that, sorry, Select Board doesn't like that, that's fine. But just great ideas. And if you want any information on any of them in particular, happy to give it. One of them in particular, if you don't mind, is a very simple idea that you would have a removal order. And that's required under the Conservation Commission permit that's been granted. And that would carry it forward to, into a notice of intent, jointly done again by the Select Board and SBPF, so that we can have a permitted project and a permitted removal with the correct escrow funding. It's just advancing ideas that are already in the Concom order. Happy to answer any questions.
I'm going to take questions from the board first? Or do, do we want Vince to walk through the elements of it? What's the sense of the board?
Probably have Vince walk through.
Yeah, that's sort of where I'm at. If you wouldn't mind, Erica, do you want to put up the document?
There's one or two typos. Libby caught one and I caught one more after that.
While we're putting it up, just remember, it's rough. It is a rough document.
And if, and it's not in any way close to what you might consider anything final. And if any board members want to add anything, send it. We'd love to hear it.
And I think, Vince, it would be really helpful if, you know, the items that you feel we have consensus, like sort of hot, you know, sort of separate them and based on the discussion. And then Meredith, I'll let you comment as, as we go, after we go through this section. Okay?
Meredith Mulvaney Howard, here from SBPF.
Yeah. Okay. Go ahead, Vince.
All right, so I'm going to try and go through this quickly and try not to waste time or be boring. So at the start, there's a couple of whereas's that talk about the orders of conditions that were, give the file numbers and their SE 4873, 3736, which is the new one that's just got approved by the Conservation Commission on March 20th and signed by March 28th. And then the local order, Nantucket, AN 142. General whereas, the town of Nantucket will comply with the issued order, Conservation Commission order. Then a very simple one, just to understand the pieces of land that we're talking about here. We're not using the entirety of these just to say their map and parcel numbers and their approximate areas. So on the town GIS, it's map and parcel 48, 8, and with an area of about 12.2 acres, map and parcel 49, 9, with about 44 acres, map and parcel 48, 6, with about 1 acre. And that's at the very north end, right by 119 Baxter. Some of the things that you might expect, SBPF shall be responsible for the use of town property and under the town's supervision. SBPF shall strictly adhere to the terms and of the Conservation Commission and Masti EP Order of Conditions, the kind of things that you kind of call a little bit boilerplate. SBPF shall fund all of the construction, monitoring and maintenance of the project as per the Order of Conditions. That was an agreeable one. Here's a good one. SBPF shall lodge an escrow fund with the town of Nantucket so that the town can undertake removal of the system should SBPF not be in a position to undertake removal. This is perfectly consistent.
I don't know if you want me to respond to one, or go through the whole thing? I just didn't know if it's hard to kind of jump back and forth. I wasn't sure if you guys wanted.
Yeah, I, I think we'll just walk through them all and then if you have any, if Vince has said there's agreement on something and, and, you know, I'll let you come back through it and, and comment on the whole thing, I think. Go ahead, Vince.
The escrow is perfectly carried forward from the existing structure that's on the ground. So it's kind of, again, something close to boilerplate. The town shall undertake a study to determine the appropriate cost of the removal and thus the value of the initial escrow fund. So if you take the Phase 1, geotubes from Reach 1, 2 and 3, that's what that refers to, and how much that will cost to remove. The town shall undertake an annual review to determine if sufficient funds are in place for removal and if additional funds are required through inflation or an associated construction cost change. This is something we don't currently have and it's a bit of a hindrance to us. So it just seemed like a wise thing to include and to maybe attach it to regular review for construction costs and inflation of, of construction costs. SBPF shall fund increases as required annually or be reimbursed should removal cost decrease, just to make sure that everything is fair. And the Order of Conditions requires the removal of the plan, that a removal plan be filed with the Conservation Commission. That's a Concom thing. And then it's an, what's after that is an addition. The Select Board requires that permission for the removal also be filed for and approved. As with the approval, as with the approved Order of Conditions, this will be a joint application between the town and SBPF. So we're just filing for removal, just to have it as a permitted thing. This is a step above what the commission have requested. Activation of the removal plan with the approved Order of Conditions can be undertaken by either party independently should SBPF sees as an organization the project have any or multiple failures in compliance or should SBPF breach in the terms of the license. So everything here is a license agreement, separate from what the Concom is doing, but it might be triggered by either potentially, or even if SBPF folded as an organization. SBPF shall file all required reports with the town of Nantucket Select Board Office for review two weeks before the submission to the Conservation Commission. That's something we previously had, so that's just a carry forward. Thank you, Erica. The term length of the license is five years from the date of issuance. So normal Concom permits are three years. This time they gave a five-year one. And I'm reflecting, I'm reflecting that the Concom term and this license be about the same length or should be at the same length. The town of Nantucket may revoke this license should the terms of the license be breached. This is, this should probably just be moved somewhere else towards the start. It's a bit more boilerplate. Any amendment or modification of the project shall be agreed by the town in writing prior to the request, request being filed. Just an obvious one, if you're going to seek an amendment, do it jointly. That's all that really comes back to. SBPF shall be responsible for any damage done to the public road or public utilities within the roadway related to this project and sand deliveries. This one, we need to do a bit of work on with SBPF, but generally relatively agreeable. But need to understand the existing condition first, if that's not an unfair thing to say. SBPF shall provide a yearly financial account for all the expenses incurred by the project. This is something we've always been interested in. Just one of those things that's kind of a kitchen sink catch-all that we like to see. SBPF shall not apply for, to activate Phase 2 without written approval from the town. So there's three, two phases in this. Reach 1, 2 and 3 is Phase 1. Reach 4 and 5 to the south is Phase 2. And that's also something that's reflective of what the Conservation Commission was talking about. Increase public access to the beach below the bluff. SBPF shall develop a full design and permit for the public access stairs as described in the notice of intent at 101 Baxter Road within one year of the date of issuance. So got to talk about this from a small bit. This one, 101 Baxter Road was in the notice of intent as a conceptual design. It might not be that location and we don't know what it will be exactly just yet and it'll have to go through full design, is the point. I'm just trying to make sure that we're reflecting things that were in the NOI and carrying them forward into the license. But again, this one is one of the ones that will need work, just so you know. SBPF will grant an easement to the town and the public use of beach access stairs to the public. That was pretty simple and straightforward. There was no issue with that one. SBPF will have a closure mechanism at the top of the stairs that is only to be used when works or maintenance activities are being undertaken on the erosion control structure. That's just public safety and that's not really any contentious kind of thing. The, the Wisconsin Bluff Walk shall remain open from its current location, current form from 65 Baxter Road. SBPF must extend this walk prior, extend this walk to their property at 85 Baxter Road. So this was not in anything else. This is strictly a license idea. The walk used to go up this way. There'd be a beach access stairs, 85, 101, whatever it happens to be. It would be an idea and be very favorable to the public to continue this north. I'm not going to say we had full agreement on that, but it's certainly one that's open for discussion, I should think. A drainage assessment of the public road and way from 41 to 119 Baxter Road will be funded by SBPF. This is to ensure no adverse runoff towards the bluff face and that the drainage condition above the works area is correctly accounted for. So this is something that was in the existing system that was done after it was initially constructed. And it would, it's just a reflection of something that's already kind of an on-the-ground condition so that we can carry that forward. Now, this would be a big and expensive study potentially. This is something we're going to have to discuss more with SBPF. This is not one of the ones where there was outright agreement, but one of the ones we can work through on. So there's more after this, but does anyone, do you want to stop on this one, Brooke? Do you want me to keep going?
Why don't we hold there? Any clarifying questions from the board? And then I'll give Meredith an opportunity to.
I have some questions.
Sure, turn your mic on.
This is for 12 years. What happens after 12 years?
Five years.
Five years. You mentioned 12 years somewhere.
I did, no.
No. So, so the license is only for five years?
Correct. And then they'd have to return to the board to get another five-year license extension.
And if they don't want to, what happens?
We'll have a permitted removal plan and escrow fund, so there's a built-in answer.
And if the mitigation requirements, say they have, what, 10 years to put the adequate sand in? So that runs after the time they have a license. Somehow that doesn't compute in my mind.
So this is also something that was discussed at the Conservation Commission. They're giving a five-year permit as well. But they're also of the mind that they'll have no issue issuing another five-year permit in five years' time. So.
See, that bothers, that bothers me because at the end of five years, things may not be going well from either side. And it, it's just, it's murky. To me, the time should all be the same. And, and I have trouble with the mitigation of 10 years seems like a long time. I mean, I, I'm having trouble with this whole project. I'll be really honest with you all.
I appreciate that, but this was something that was discussed ad nauseam at the Conservation Commission.
I know.
And the commission was perfectly fine with it.
The last thing you want to hear me is to say ad nauseam. You know, I believe we need to do something to defend the bluffs. But if we're going to do it, we ought to do it right and not waste our time and money and efforts on other people's.
Agreed.
To me, it's putting adequate sand on, doing it correct. And then we, I'm just uncomfortable with everything.
Okay, so we all.
So I'm not sure I'd, I'd go ahead with a license agreement at all right now.
Malcolm?
Until we resolve these.
Yeah, we, we should be talking like to the board instead of back and forth with Vince because we're kind of putting Vince on the spot here.
I'm sorry. I apologize to Vince and I apologize to the board.
It's just, it's a subtle difference, but it matters, I think.
Fine.
Yeah, appreciate that. Okay, anything else?
I think we should get, first, I think we should get through the other points and then discuss some of the things that Meredith is going to bring up. And then I think we should have a discussion.
Okay.
Because I think some of the, the concerns that you have, I think, are addressed.
Yeah.
You know, so sort of as the sand issue is a big topic and so it's been talked about and worked, being worked on. So let's get through everything and then.
Yeah, more, I really was more questions about the details of what Vince has given us so far at this point. And then we can have, yeah, I think Matt's right, have the discussion.
Sure thing. And sand is actually the next thing. And plus, again, if, if anyone thinks anything is missing in this, this is only the kitchen sink catch-all version, just so that we can look at it first and see what, what we want as in a license before we go off and have legal counsel review and, and put it in and change it from poor man's English to legal English.
Okay.
Okay, so some other potential issues. Make-up sand. Well, the make-up sand plan is the preserve of the Conservation Commission. SBPF shall also be accountable to the town of Nantucket to file a plan with the Select Board for review in order to maintain the integrity of the public beach. That'll come up in a minute, so let's just. That'll come up in a minute, so let's just say we can put that one aside for a second because we're going to discuss sand afterwards and SPPF do have a sand plan that they'd like to discuss. Work to relocate utilities. Start to prepare for road relocation. To increase resilience, SPPF will develop a plan to relocate services, including electrical services, water services, sewer and telecommunications for Baxter Road to Sangati Road. Also have a framework to be within a five-year license. So this is just, again, a form of assistance for the road relocation project. This last point here is actually very similar to a point above. I just kind of had different wording that I kind of liked and if, if the board liked this one better, so be it. And this is again about the road surface condition. SPPF will contract to have large numbers of dump trucks deliver sand. If this leads to deterioration in the road surface on the delivery routes, SPPF will fund road resurfacing and or reconstruction as deemed necessary through the Town of Nantucket Assessment. Again, this is one of those things where we need to know the existing conditions and understand what the impacts might be through deliveries, but again, something to work through with SPPF. I'll hit the last one. Further points for consideration. These were things that I could have put in other places. The first three are all very similar. SPPF shall deliver springing easements for property owners affected by takings from the alternative access.
Can you explain that a little bit?
Sure thing.
Okay.
So this, the other project that we're looking at, the alternative access project, as land erodes and moves inwards, we'd need springing easements so that, say, the town parcels could migrate landwards and not have public property, as have private property, integrating into public property. That's a very poor description of springing easements, but it's moving property lines Point for betterments as related to the alternative access and then easements for alternative routes to get the unrealized alternative easement agreements. Those three points there together are all about the alternative access plan. I'd like to find a way to build in points for the alternative access plan so that SPPF can be a partner in that project and assist us. That's the purpose of that. If the board doesn't want that, that's fine, we can take it out. If we can find good wording that SPPF is happy with, that will be beneficial in my mind. But again, a question for the board. And the very last question is an update to the memorandum of understanding for March of 2022. If the license is robust enough, we might not need it, but it's just an idea, just to consider. That's about everything I have. And please, again, lastly, I will never consider this two-sided, anything close to just a kitchen sink catch-all. If board members see anything that's missing, really dislike something, happy to take the comment and happy to fix it.
Yeah, one more issue I think you should touch on is, oh, is offshore sand and the requirement that, I'd fill that in on that.
So something to do with, something to the effect of SPPF should be responsible for all sand, whether it be road delivery or offshore.
Well, you were talking about offshore, offshore sand before you go to step two.
Okay.
Yeah, that was something we spoke about the other day and, you know, there, there's a joint, you know, the interests are aligned there, you know, and I know we've talked a lot about, you know, getting an offshore sand, but not really much has been done about it. One of the agreements that they've talked about is, is, you know, getting that...
Hey, Matt, we're morphing into discussion?
No, I'm talking, well, it's one point that we didn't get to that was on here that wasn't there.
Okay, I just wanted to make...
But that's fine.
Yeah, okay, thanks. Meredith, did you want to sort of give us your feedback?
Give us our side? Yes, of course. That would be great. Thank you. So SPPF is obviously appreciative of us being here tonight and being part of the conversation with you, our partner, about these different terms. We do believe that, you know, finalizing and coming to a joint resolution on these before any critical next steps is very important, whether that, you know, is, you know, will be indicated, whether that means kind of where we go from here, but we do think it's important to engage and take the time that's necessary to ensure that we're all on the same page. We do note that the MOU from 2022 did include a draft of the license agreement and so we do think that that really should be our foundation and a starting point since that was an exhibit to the agreement between us and the town. And obviously these points can be added to that, but that should really be the pre-agreed upon starting point that we can go from. I'm happy to walk through these points. So we just received this document on Monday, today's Wednesday, but we are trying to act expeditiously and look at this. So we have looked at some of these things, but some of these elements, again, I think need more time for us to work through and discuss. On Vince's bullet points, I put numbers next to them, but I'm happy to kind of look. The first one that we just wanted to kind of make sure, we had talked with everybody about, was number three, which is SPPF should lodge an escrow fund. We would just obviously want to ensure that that includes an escrow bond or letter of credit, you know, that's to ensure that there's flexibility there for exactly how those funds are finalized. The points A, B, and C under that prong three identify that the town shall undertake a study to determine the appropriate cost. This is something that SPPF is going to have to do anyway as we go through all the construction and costs, so why put that additional financial burden on the town when we've said that this project is going to be 100% funded by SPPF and not have any incurred costs from the town? So we think that that should be an opportunity for SPPF could undertake a study that's then shared publicly with the town and provided to the town for both A and B under prong three. Fourth was Vince's idea of kind of filing in advance of removal plan. We don't believe that that's really necessary at this time, nor would it actually be productive. In the summer of 2023, I actually personally worked with Mark Haley from Haley and Aldridge and filed and worked through the removal plan process. You actually need to understand what's happening on the ground. If we were to do that now, we would be hypothetically kind of coming up with an idea of where failure would occur, in what areas and what it would potentially look like, and we really couldn't create a formal survey or construction set now. And so we think that that, obviously, there might be other ways to address this overall concern that we're happy to discuss. Number five, which was for moving forward on a removal plan, you know, we'd be fine with that, obviously, you know, if it's, you know, kind of finalizing and moving forward on a removal plan down the road, so long as there was just notice to the non-moving party. And then that it should also provide, you know, there should be, I think this is also where Vince had, I don't know if you guys want to put this up again, it might be helpful. I don't know if it's hard to kind of comprehend where I'm talking about, but there was also then a sentence about the project and any multiple failures. It just should include any failures, you know, deemed to be failed by the Conservation Commission, because the Conservation Commission worked really hard to identify failure criteria. And so I think it should relate back to those pre-existing terms under the Conservation Commission, failure requirements and including any cure periods. Next was the question about the five-year term. The 2013 license agreement for the current pilot project did not include a specific term length. It obviously is a license, so it could be revoked based on specific requirements, but we think that, given the fact that there is, you know, the intent to put in, you know, millions of dollars into this project, that to have a, a short-term length like five years, you know, is not as recommended and potentially it can simply be, you know, language from the 2013 license agreement was, that I think was just so long as there's a valid order. So so long as the, the order of conditions is valid and gets extended, that's obviously then, you know, how the, that the license then would continue. That obviously doesn't, creates, resolves any issue with you have a license or then you don't have a, or you don't have a permit. You just say whenever, so long as there's an order that is valid from the Conservation Commission and a permit valid, the license shall continue. Number eight, which is the, the Town of Nantucket may revoke this license. We are fine with that, maybe providing a requirement that, you know, there should be 90 days written notice and provide cure periods for any potential breach. Number nine, which is any amendment shall be or modified, we are supportive of that. We are supportive of, you know, putting in responsibilities for the public roads. We thought that it would probably be recommended that, you know, it includes something to the effect of SPPF at its own expense shall prepare an assessment and take photos of pre-construction conditions of the road. And then that way we can look at those pre-construction conditions and evaluate whether there's been any damage and then repair that damage. And then that we would, you know, have to submit that damage report to the town 45 days after construction has been completed to ensure that there's a clear understanding of what the pre-construction conditions of the road were. Number 11, which is the request that SPPF shall provide yearly financial accounting. SPPF is a 501(c)(3). We have to file a IRS Form 990. That's public, you know, if that's something, that's something I think that would be sufficient. I don't think any additional information would be necessary or appropriate. Number 12, SPPF shall not apply to activate Phase Two without, and here it says approval. I think it should be written notice to Matt Fee's comment. Phase Two cannot be triggered until we have secured offshore sand, which is beneficial for the town and for SPPF. And so at the end of the day, you know, that is a trigger where we also have to go back anyway to the Conservation Commission and produce certain documents that are part of the order of condition. So we think that so long as we provide notice and we then jointly go back and provide all the documentation that the Conservation Commission have identified to move forward with Phase Two. As Vince indicated, we are supportive of the access to the bluff and providing a new area. We would also just indicate that, you know, we will identify and select that location as Vince indicated. We also think that it should include a language that says that we should prepare plans for public seating, because we'd actually also had talked in depth about providing public seating on SPPF land, so that way when someone's walking up and down Baxter Road, they can utilize SPPF land and take a seat and enjoy the view rather than kind of having to, to walk all the way back the two miles before they can sit down. And so that's something that we would be very happy to add to that section as well. We had no issue, obviously, with the granting of the easement, number 14. We then jumped down to number 16, which was, we're fine with, obviously, protecting the existing and current bluff walk. We would not be, you know, looking at expanding that, you know, given the fact that that's a current, you know, dangerous condition with the bluff and we don't know if that would be able to be extended. Number 17 about the drainage, that was a specific issue regarding the topography of that area, that again, as Vince indicated, was after the fact. This is a costly item that we have not had a chance to evaluate. We're happy to engage with the Select Board on this and come back to you. The make-up sand, as Vince said, we're hopefully going to be talking about that just in a moment. There is a proposed sand plan that is part of Condition 52 and 56 that we'll be discussing later on tonight in regards to the jumping down, in regards to the springing easements. I just, the springing easements, it's not just an easement as, as was indicated about moving the road and creating an easement. The springing aspect is that it only is available, it only springs into effect, that easement that's already been recorded and signed. It would be held in escrow by a third party, similar to when you go to closing and you have, you know, cash held in escrow. Those easements would be held in escrow and we would be okay working with that so long as the springing, the trigger upon which those easements become available to the town to use, is evaluated by a third party. Maybe it's, you know, where we have two engineers, where they pick a third engineer, similar to kind of a, a third-party neutral appraiser. We would pick a third and to determine that, okay, failure has occurred by, based on that engineer's analysis, and then it would trigger and spring into effect. So again, I think we're, we're very, you know, happy to discuss these, but we do think that there's a lot of dialogue that needs to happen and we're happy to kind of take this as slow and kind of methodically as necessary to make sure we go through this.
How best to proceed? The board want, Vince, did you want to add something?
Couple of very small things.
Okay.
So in point four, the idea about the town undertaking the study is just because we did it before and the town has different cost metrics and a private organization might, because we've higher costs, being the municipality. Again, one to be discussed, but there's other little things that we can work through. I'm just so pleased to hear that so many of the points are agreeable. It is a very positive thing and a very good place to be in when we're discussing the license. I've got a couple of more notes here. Thank you for the notes, Meredith, and I'm, I'm very pleased with how this can work out. Again, there's issues to be resolved, but this is a good place to be.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Meredith. Board, how do, how do we want to proceed?
I would like to ask two questions.
Sure. Yep, just need your mic.
And I know all this is...
It's, it's actually not on.
That's probably a good thing. I know this has all been discussed. You, you'd mentioned about having, I was concerned about who would make a decision there was a breach and you said there'd be an outside, perhaps a couple of engineers would make that decision? Because the question was, if we decide not to go forward or to replace them or whatever, who makes that decision?
We had, we have a nice document that goes all the way back to about 2013 where there was, it was prepared by a former DPW director whose first name was Cara, but I don't know her, the lady's second name.
Rosenowski.
Thank you. And the, the way that it worked is, it said that you'd need three engineers, one from the town, one from SPPF and one mutually agreed third party. The three engineers discuss it and then they look at the condition. And the conditions were things like if the edge of the road was within 25 feet of the edge of the bluff, bluff, that doesn't necessarily trigger an automatic closure, it triggers an, an engineer's review. The engineers could look at it, determine that the road is unstable and that's where we're closed. So hopefully, I, I have actually have got the document, I can totally send it to you. It's been in the town files for 14 years, 15 years?
Can I just kind of follow up? Well, that would be a breach of the road, but supposing there's some, we had this letter and document that some people are concerned about, to the north of this, that these geotubes actually affect their beach. Supposing after five years, that determined to be a real problem, who would decide to stop the project?
So I'm guessing that that's an environmental issue and environmental issues generally handled by the Conservation Commission. So that is separate from the license. If you want to have a license finding that's based on that, I think we can work it in, but that's more or less a ConCom issue.
And, and they, what they did in that issue is that they did, we had walkable beach as a definition, they've expanded that definition to be, I think, 15 feet measured from somewhere. And so, you know, so they've got that in there and they have that under their purview and under their responsibility. So, and so that's, you know...
Well, again, I apologize for confusing licensing with the issue, but this is kind of an opportunity to have people involved. And I, I did not go to every Conservation Commission hearing, but I, I followed it to some degree. And one more question, if I got a sec. If I recall, about six months ago, there was an issue about the sequence of when the tubes would be put in and, and Mr. Murphy had some disagreement. He wanted some suction put in first and you said that wasn't financially feasible.
We declined that request.
I know we declined that request, but it, it...
The, the order of condition resolved that and it's specifically stated in the order of condition that Reach One has to go first, but there was a language that would allow Reach One, Two, and Three to all occur at the same time. And so obviously that's something that we, you know, there, there are multiple things that SPPF has to do between now, obviously, one is, you know, talk about the sand issue, two, one is get this license finalized, but we also need to do fundraising. Reach One will incur, require a fundraising and so we'll be embarking on that process as well.
That wasn't quite what our staff had suggested, but that's what the Conservation Commission said. Is that correct?
I think it was, I think we were on agreement on this, where am I? I don't want to, we were on agreement on this.
And we resolved it in August and then the, the Select Board's decision went back to the commission and was perfectly reflected in that. So this was resolved in August, essentially.
This was a big thing, I mean, obviously a lot of our supporters and members were obviously not pleased. This is, is a big kind of compromise that I think, you know, at the end of the day, you know, everyone understands is what was required, but this was definitely something where we had a lot of supporters that were concerned because obviously, you know, there is an obligation to do that fundraising now.
Yep. So if I may summarize, the request was to do one first. The compromise is one has to be done first, but they can also do two and three simultaneously.
Yes, and they have to finish one first as well.
Yeah, one has to be started first and finished first.
Correct, but also simultaneous.
Yep, so they can't, yes. So that was addressed in that NOI. Okay, Tom? Okay. Tom?
Evening, Vince. A quick question on road surface condition.
Yes.
What, is it pot, I'm a little concerned about the dump trucks and sand and what it's going to do, the village and Milestone Road and traffic, et cetera. Is there any chance of that sand being delivered by sea?
We looked at that, and it is actually quite specific in the current ConCom order that, yes, all sand will currently be delivered by road. This would, it would have to go through a different permitting process and go through the Army Corps of Engineers in order to do that. And that is actually a feature plan that SPPF are working on, and it would be something to work towards, but I, I'd love to see that day, really.
Got it, thank you.
And just to really clarify this, the people who will be most affected by the sand deliveries are the people on Baxter Road, who are also funding this. So, it's in their interest. The people along the way, too, obviously, will have some interest, but we're also going to account for that within the license to make sure that, say, oh, white enough, there's a crossroads that gets excess, you know, gets potholes or whatever. Then there's a mechanism to fix it, provided it's related to this.
Anybody else from the board have any questions?
Yeah, I think, I think the issues, I think there are, how do I say this? I was having trouble, I'll be honest, I was having trouble putting, you know, sort of putting a lot of power, effort into this at first, because I knew it was going to be, or I thought it was going to be appealed, and, and it has. And so the questions that, you know, Bert Balkan asked are some that we are, you know, that they're working on and that we're working on. What is the impact, you know? And so, that, that is, those issues are, are there. I'm not, I think, I, I, what we're trying to figure out is, is when's the, and what we're trying to do here is, is put the town in a position where it has, where we clean up some of the things that weren't in, you know, necessarily in the town's favor, and where the town has the leverage and the, you know, and, and a truly cooperative situation, which at times hasn't, you know, has not been what we've experienced. And so, and, and from their, from SPPF's perspective, they feel like some of this is dragged along too long, et cetera. So there's been, there's been sort of two sides on that. We are trying to put, you know, put those so that the town is in a bit more of a driver's seat on this, and I think Vince has done a pretty good job of trying to do that. I look at this, and I think that there's a sort of, I think everyone looks, some people look and say, this is the worst thing ever, and should be out right now, and never should happen. Other people look and say, oh, this is going to last forever. None of us know, but the truth is really somewhere in between. Is that five years, seven years, is it 20 years? None of us really know. And so what we're trying to do is put a document together that addresses that, and that allows people to work cooperatively between now and whenever that date is, and that, in the meantime, we have everything in place for retreat and for, you know, and for other aspects that will have to happen. And that's in the town's benefit, and that's in the homeowner's benefit, to have these issues clarified and clear. And I think that's, you know, that's the tight rope that we're walking, and I think that is not, and that, and that isn't, that isn't talking about and addressing the reality of going to town meeting. And so that's, that's the next, you know, for what, for us to think about is, okay, you know, what has to go to town? What do we have to have for town meeting? What do we need to present? You know, are we comfortable that what we have is, is solid and, you know, and will be supported? And I think that's something that, you know, that Meredith and her side wants as well. We don't want to be putting something forward that is not, you know, not in both sides' best interest.
If I could add to that just a tiny bit, to the chair? This gets to the point of the term lengths as well. I appreciate that SPPF would like an open-ended license, which is understandable, but if it's a five-year license or any term limited, it gives the Select Board the power to have a point in time in the future to review this and say, okay, here's the license, it worked well. Can we edit this? Can we add to this? What would we like to see dropped? What would we like to see added in? It gives the power to the Select Board, because the Select Board would ultimately issue the license. And having that term length gives the Select Board that power. That's the purpose of having it in there. It wasn't in the previous license. That is absolutely true, but that's why I put it in. Now, if the board doesn't like that and wants to give a full license with no term length, that's up to you guys.
Can I, can I provide a comment?
Sure, go ahead, Meredith.
So, a couple things. I think that, you know, in regards to the term limit, let's base this on facts, science, and then also basic kind of a, of finance principles, right? One, the facts and the science are that Dr. Dwight Dunk from Epsilon, who was our consultant, did testify during the hearing that based on erosion rates and the project, that the walkable beach criteria would not occur, or that threshold for failure, until potentially 15 to 25 years. So if we're talking about a timeframe, that's actually then potentially more an appropriate timeframe, 15 to 25 years. Again, we don't know if it could be longer, we don't know what might happen. And in that regard, if you're, we're looking to have private citizens fund this 100% so that residents have to pay nothing, taxpayers, residents of Nantucket don't have to contribute and pay money towards the road relocation, we think that it would make sense to have it based on a reasonable amount of time based on the money that's being contributed. You're not going to buy a home if you have to pay back that loan in five years, right? We need to be able to have a certain amount of reasonable time based on the data, which is saying that it's somewhere between 15 and 25 years.
Okay, thanks, Meredith. So we have some process questions for us as a board to address in terms of what next and, and the, and, you know, the timeline between now and town meeting and what we think is appropriate to have ready before town meeting, I think is what Matt's saying.
I have some, I have concerns. I, I recently, you know, I've talked about this a couple of times. I recently did a planning seminar on how to, you know, sort of public, engage the public and, you know, and basically reach out to the public, and how do you make sure that what you're bringing is supported? And one thing I learned there was that by the time you get there, you should have had enough public information sessions and enough, answered all the questions and dealt with all, you know, all of the different things. Not everyone's going to agree, but you've done everything you can, and I'm not sure that we have time. I could see, being at town meeting now, people saying, well, we don't have a license. Where's the license? You know, or they haven't put sand on. Where's, you know, how, you know, and one of the things that we've talked about in our group was how do we deal with the, the previous sand issue, which we know is a big bone of contention with the community? And so, I, you know, so that is, you know, some of the good faith that we are, you know, engendering is, is with that issue. And I think that, so, so how do we make sure that that happens? And how do we also, what we're also, we were also discussing is how do we make sure that happens during these appeals? You know, like, like we shouldn't be just put on hold for three years and, and not having that go into the system during those appeals. And so, so those are the, some of the issues that we haven't solved, that I think are going to be big, big issues at town meeting. If we can solve those, then maybe we've, you know, if we can find a way to solve those between now and then, then I think there's a chance, you know, of going, but they have to be solved. And I don't have the, you know, a magic answer how to do that, but--
I'll tell you, I, I am concerned that, that we are trying to ask town meeting for approval for something that is in appeal. I think the timing is, is not great. And I also, I also believe that in a, in a topic that's, that has had this much contention in the community, to ask for blanket permission to grant a license without a draft license for the community to know what's being, you know, at least, at least for the most part proposed, I think sets, sets this item up to not be successful at town meeting. So, I, the question I have is, does this town meeting make sense, or does it make sense to wait and see how the appeals play out? And, and that gives us more time to work on coming to agreement on a license framework, to have it more nailed down, say, for special town meeting in the fall, and, and maybe, you know, Vince, you might, I don't know whether that, how that impacts the timeline of the project. I mean, obviously, if it's an appeal, it's an appeal, it's not moving forward, right? Is that, and maybe we need Town Council to answer that question more than Vince.
Yes. Better for Town Council, Town Council on the appeal side. The very rough timeline that we've been roughly working to is, we've now finished with the Conservation Commission have a draft positive, have a positive order completed, signed on March 28th. That then started the appeals period, it is what it is. If this were to pass at town meeting, then, then it's a yes or no question at town meeting to allow the Select Board to draft a license or not. Imagine that were to go through and it were to work and pass, excuse me. Then, over the summer, the Select Board could finish all the terms of the license, then potentially have this done by, before the fall. If that were to happen, and if SPPF can work through their fundraising over this summer as, as residents are returning and seeing the condition, that would potentially allow them to start construction in the fall. And I hate to say it, and I've been saying this for, here for quite a while, there are sections of the road that worry me so much, and I just did the March monitoring a couple of weeks ago with another member of staff in our office. There's one part of the northern section of Baxter Road that is 36 feet from the edge of the road to the edge of the bluff. Further south, there's an area that used to be around 65, 70 feet, it's now 55 feet. It's just south of the sand delivery site. And that has lost quite a bit of ground in an unprotected area where there's no geotubes. If one or both of those points breaches, we're in dire straits. So, there is an urgency to this.
Okay.
Now, the reality is, if this doesn't pass at town meeting, then that doesn't work anyway, and then we have to go for the Alternative Access Project. That's a different story. And that's the only remaining thing. So, the, the question becomes, do we try to take it to this town meeting? And if it fails, do we bring it back for a special? But there's, you know, positives and negatives associated with both sides of that. The, one of the ways to look at it is, we could take it to this town meeting, consider it a learning event, and then if we had to bring it to the next town meeting, a special town meeting. Just an idea.
As a backup, okay. Mr. Pucci, could you walk us a little bit through the process of the appeals? And obviously, you can't put timelines on it, but how does this impact the ability of the project to move forward?
Yes, good evening, Madam Chair and members of the board. This is George Pucci from KP Law. Your first question went to whether the project can proceed with the appeals. No, it cannot. There, there is no, you know, build as of, at-risk provision with these environmental laws, so the appeal of the permit puts everything on hold until that's resolved. So they, they can, neither you nor SPPF can move forward with that project while these appeals are pending. To sum up, at this point, I've seen three appeals. One is the Nantucket Land and Water Council and residents, more than 10 resident group, they're listed on the appeal filed for a superseding order of conditions. And then there were two other appeals that are also filed with Mass DEP. They're appeals by two individual Baxter Road property owners appealing. It is an ironic situation you're in, because the Commission is facing an appeal by project opponents, and they're also facing an appeal by project proponents. So, those three appeals are pending. Where, where those go is, there'll be a, a technical representative of Mass DEP who will do a site visit, confer with the parties. He, he or she will receive submissions related to the request for a superseding order. And then Mass DEP will issue a ruling one way or another, either upholding the Commission's order, issuing a superseding order, superseding the Commission's order in whole or in part. That is under a fairly tight timeframe, but then it's quite unpredictable after that, because then the parties would have the right to a further appeal of the Mass DEP superseding order of conditions. And those appeals are state administrative appeals, they'll go to the Office of Appeals and Dispute Resolution, also at Mass DEP, and those are administrative appeal hearings involving submissions by expert witnesses and the whole, you know, full-blown administrative evidentiary appeal process at that point. So like I say, the, the, the timeframe will be fairly quick in terms of the DEP rep getting in touch with, with the Conservation Commission and the appealing parties, set up a site visit, go ahead on the issuance of, you know, a superseding order of conditions. But, but again, the, the further appeal after that in this administrative evidentiary appeal process would, would be lengthier and, and quite a bit more involved.
And then, I have a question, if that's all right?
Go ahead, Matt.
And if, if either party is unhappy with the second administrative appeal, is there any recourse and where?
Well, you, this is America, so you get to--
That's what I was--
Further appeal. You get to go to court on the issue from Office of Appeals and Dispute Resolution if you're unhappy with that decision.
Okay. And that's one level of appeal to the court, through the courts?
No. No, you would go to the trial court level, and it would be decided on the record, and then there would be a further appellate right from that if you're unhappy with the lower court ruling. You could seek further relief at the messages appeals court.
Okay. And timeframe for that initial review?
That will be, that will be quick. I expect the Commission will, will receive a notice fairly quickly from the, the DEP rep who is, who is going to be overseeing that appeal. That, that would be a matter of days that, that you would expect to hear from Mass DEP on that.
Okay, so before town meeting, before--
Possibly, yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, thoughts, board?
I mean, I think we should try to, to continue to work on this license agreement and, and take it to this town meeting.
Anybody else? Tom?
Is that even possible to try and hammer out a full license and get, get it out there so the public has, I don't know, at least a week to digest it? I know that's probably going to be tough, but we did hear some broad agreement on some of the high-level points here.
We can certainly whip this up. George, how's your calendar? We could try and make this into something a bit more presentable with stronger points, with input from SPPF. It's doable, but it wouldn't be anywhere close to final and voteable. Or I could try for that, but yeah, we can, we can see how we can do. We can put in the good college try and seriously improve this.
Yeah, I, I should weigh in on that, Brooke. It, it's not really a legal question, but it would involve us and, and our input on to the draft license. But I can tell you, if, if it ends up the board's majority vote, that you do want to try to put something into, you know, an actual form of the, of the actual license that you would be putting in front of people, we will get that done. If you ask us to do that, we will work with Vince and with SPPF, and we'll get something in draft before you so that it can be, you know, voted by the board and then submitted in advance of town meeting. So we, we just need to hear that from you before we go forward and try to do that.
Okay. Meredith, what, is SPPF willing to nose to the grindstone in the next couple of weeks?
We are definitely willing to work really hard and make sure that we're all on the same page, but also, though, don't want to push this. I, I don't know if I agree with Vince's idea of, let's have this be a testbed or a, a learning opportunity. We really want to have a situation where we feel as though the Select Board, as our partner, feel very confident in standing up with us, you know, shoulder to shoulder, you know, that we've come to all of our mutual understanding of all the different terms, and that we're confident in the license agreement. So, we don't feel a need to rush this if we don't, aren't ready. Obviously, if the Select Board says, you guys want to really, and you think that we have the support of the residents to get a positive vote at town meeting, and you guys feel confident in that, if we can-- feel confident in that, if we can work this out, we will work day and night to make sure that we address those issues.
Question for you, does the securing of the authorization for the license agreement impact your fundraising ability this summer? I mean, in terms of this town meeting versus fall?
I mean, having the support of the Select Board and having a finalized license agreement and having a positive town vote would all obviously benefit the ability for us to finalize and to get money in.
And then my follow-up question, are you willing, looking at where we are now, are you willing to? I see it as a risk to not have it nailed down before town meeting. I don't know whether you see it that way or not, but if it's not nailed down before town meeting, are you willing to take that risk? Or would you prefer we delay?
We do not want to take any risk. We would rather, and I think it's best, especially given all the history here, that we are in agreement with terms before we go to town meeting. Again, we are happy to work really hard and see if that can get done before May, but if it's not done, then we think it is prudent and responsible for us as partners to delay to the fall town meeting and get those issues resolved.
Okay, thank you, that's helpful. Dawn?
Yeah, it seems to me that we should give it a try, and then we can always make a late motion to table it.
Yeah, one of the wild cards is what happens with the appeals. And, you know, so if we agree on something and then the appeal says something that impacts what we've agreed to, then we're back, you know, are we break? So what do we have to do? Those are the, which is why I was having trouble even thinking about some of this. But I think that's the, that's one of the things I'm concerned with.
Malcolm?
I mean, if people want to work day and night to come up with something better, that's fine, but personally, I'm not sure at the end of it I would be willing to support it. I may, I may not, but unless I have a lot of questions answered and a lot of guarantees that I don't see, I could not support it.
Tom?
I guess how I'm thinking about this is that, what, town meeting is 17 days away or something like that? We do not have a meeting next week. So our forum is the primary place where it'd be presented, and members of the public could see it, and it'd be our packet and on the website of that. I'm worried about it getting, being able, the ability for us, the town, to get it out there and so people to read it, and what the venue for that is. And if our next meeting is April 30th, that's, what, four days before town meeting? That seems like a gamble to me. And I think I'd err on the side of having the public being able to digest it first.
I think I agree it's worth continuing, moving this forward and see where we are in two I know personally I would not be voting to execute, you know, to like, agree to a draft. We won't have permission anyway, so we wouldn't be able to execute it anyway till after we have town meeting approval. But, yeah, I mean, I think it's, I think it's worth continuing the conversation and then see where, see where we end up. And I don't think it has to be Ts crossed and Is dotted by ATM, but something a little more fleshed, you know, fleshed out and robust and really points of agreement. I would ask the board, is there anything that was discussed tonight that's a, that's a solid, you know, or are we, I guess, are we authorizing Matt in this group to sort of represent us? And is there anything we want to send him off? Is he willing? And is there anything we want to send him off?
Depends what the commitment will be. If it's day and night, I'm not, I'm getting an FDA, USDA inspection for the first time tomorrow. My whole life may be upended, so, you know, but I'll know more tomorrow, so.
Okay.
Madam Chair, may I speak again?
Sure.
I mean, you said, you said you wouldn't be willing at that point to endorse it or support it. Are we going to ask these people to spend all their effort and time for something that's just going to be still a draft? Another draft? It's not going to be approved by us, most likely.
Well, it can't be till we have permission from town meeting, anyway.
Yeah.
So. Dawn?
And we likely, probably do need some caveat in there in regard to the ongoing appeals. And if anything changes, that we would have the ability to make an alteration if we were to execute something while it was still an appeal.
And they need, they need that, you know, protection as well. It has to go both ways. If it's, if something's determined there that they absolutely can't live with, then we have to, so.
Yeah. So I have three hands up online. Is the board interested in hearing from the public at this point?
Yeah, maybe it's, maybe it's something we need to know.
Okay, all right. Doug Rose first, Erica, please. And I am going to apply the three-minute limit to this.
Thanks, Brooke. Yes, I'll keep it under three minutes. I kind of scripted myself, so I'm trying to be respectful of your time. My name is Doug Rose. I'm speaking tonight as a non-voting taxpayer. I wanted to start by saying, I really appreciate the fact that you guys are discussing this topic in a public meeting. You know, I know this work is in, it's work in progress. I appreciate how much effort everyone's been putting in behind the scenes to pull this all together. And so it's great, I feel great that I'm able to offer some comments and questions as it's still coming together. Let me start by saying, I'm not sure to what degree the March 2022 MOU for this project is guiding the terms of this conceptual license agreement, but I did notice a couple of incongruities relating to that draft agreement, as well as the sand plan that I wanted to draw your attention to. Under point seven of the MOU, it states that SPF shall deliver to the board a performance bond in agreed-upon amount to provide funding to continue maintenance of the existing project and any phased expansion of the existing project. Now, while there's language in the draft license about a performance bond to cover removal costs, there's no language in there relating to maintenance. And I thought that was of a concern because it represents a potentially significant financial exposure to taxpayers. Based on publicly available information and a back-of-the-napkin estimate of costs associated with Phase 1 of the expansion, it suggests that after the initial year-one construction costs, which are going to be much more substantial, the ongoing costs for maintenance, monitoring, and mitigation may run somewhere in the neighborhood of, and take this as a big grain of salt, in the neighborhood of $4 million a year. With costs of that magnitude, I think it's important that any licensing agreement include an ironclad assurance that if, for whatever reason, SPF fails to keep the project in compliance, the town's obligations have been secured. Now, back to removal. Relating to removal, I don't know that the language in CONCOM's order of conditions represents legally ironclad assurances that, for instance, if a structure needs to be moved in order to enable removal, that that will happen. So to the degree that the license can address that level uncertainty, I think that would be helpful as well. Under point one and three of the MOU, the town and SPF committed to bringing the existing project into compliance and resolve the enforcement order. And I assume tonight that the town accepts the order of conditions as issued by the CONCOM, which included a minimum requirement of 105,000 cubic yards of sand to make up the deficit from the original geotube project and finally put the enforcement order behind us. Judging from the sand plan, which I know you guys haven't talked about directly yet, it's prepared by SPF, it appears that they intend to challenge that condition after the first two years. And I know that's within their rights to do that. I just want to clarify a potential misunderstanding. If I'm interpreting it correctly, it also, the sand plan appears to suggest that the makeup sand would be in lieu of the annual adaptive sand mitigation requirement, as opposed to, sorry, time up. That's it, thank you, guys.
Time's up, okay.
Thanks.
I'm going to go to Burton Balkhan online, and then you, Amy.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to agree with a select member, Dixon, and he said that it doesn't seem reasonable to ask the voters to vote on something they don't have a lot of time to ponder, and it's something that isn't, as I've heard words, ironclad. Like, it seems like you're going to give us a relatively rough draft to vote on. And what assurances do we, as the voting members of the community, know that what we vote on will actually be what is the actual license? Are you going to take information from the appeals and change it? And if that's the case, maybe Town Council could weigh in if you need to come back to the voters to get another vote at town meeting, if you substantially change the license that we vote on? And so I think there's these questions, and I think, I appreciate Meredith from SPF saying, of course, they'll work hard to get it done, but we don't have to rush this. It doesn't seem like the timeline is going to force a town meeting vote now. And if it's in, because there's so many other things going on with the appeals, all the work that the SPF has to do to present things to the CONCOM, it doesn't sound like anything's going to even happen to be shovel-ready till the fall anyways. I would like, as a member of the community, to see an ironclad license and something that we can discuss as a community and come to an agreement on. I think that's Vince and the board and SPF, all, everyone's saying, we want to come to compromise an agreement. And I think throwing this together, unlike some members of the board have said, just see what happens. I don't think that, if it gets voted down now, as Matt knows, it's not, it's not a good look to go back to the fall and ask again. I think we should, if it's prudent and reasonable, wait until we have an ironclad document that we can all agree on. So I'm not going to go into the actual license. I've had some points on it. I wanted to make this point, and so, and I'm running out of time. So I want to thank the board for letting me hear my piece. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. Amy?
Amy Eldridge, 56 Sangati Road. I have called in the past to complain about the dump trucks going down Sangati Road at excessive speeds when the road hadn't been redone. Now we've got a beautiful new asphalted road out there, and they're going to be going by my house at sometimes 40 or 50 miles an hour. I have called the police. I've actually spoken to Mr. Murphy about this in the past. Some of the island contractors that are hauling sand are coming up New Street, down Burnell, and up Clifton, which caused the road to become very degraded, like destroyed, and had to be, I had to beg for somebody to come out and fix it. When I called the company that I actually witnessed doing it, oh, you got to call here. When I call somewhere else, you got to call there. There's got to be some point where the community, especially the people that are not being directly affected by the project, but the neighborhood one street over, our quality of life when these things go by is awful. It is absolutely awful. Things rattle off my shelf. I come home and find photographs tipped. I mean, we've got to do something. I think safety is paramount here. I think the bluff is very important as well, but it just stinks. And is there a possibility that some of the traffic coming through the village could be delineated out Popus Road so that it's not completely all on the village escotset to take the brunt of the trucks, the sand, the speeding? Maybe have police be monitoring on the days? You guys must know when they're going to be going out there and dumping sand over the bluff. And how much of this vibration is actually affecting the topography of the road on Baxter as well as Sangati Road? I mean, it's, it's questions we've had, can't get answers, just, like, the quality of life just stinks. So it would be something I hope that you guys can take a look at. Thanks.
Thanks, Amy. Emily?
Sorry, she was well under.
She was about. Thank you, Madam Chair. Emily Molden for the Nantucket Land and Water Council. First, I just want to echo Mr. Rose's words of thanks to the board and Mr. Murphy for the work you've been putting into this and for having this public discussion. I know that historically, one of the primary and most important elements of the town's partnership with SPF has been an understanding that SPF would be responsible for the mitigation requirements for the impacts from the geotubes. And so I'm just going to make a couple of comments relative to the draft license concepts that relate primarily to that. One is really just a big-picture concept that I just wanted to share with the board. The first bullet under the other potential issues where, and I totally understand this is just a draft of concepts, but it reads that the makeup sand plan is the purview of the Conservation Commission, and SPF shall also be accountable to the town of Nantucket. I think I just wanted to make the point that when it comes to the makeup sand and the mitigation, certainly it's the purview of the Conservation Commission, and they've spent a lot of time discussing all of that and reviewing it and considering it for their permit. But as the owners of the property where the construction of this project is going to take place, and the owners of the public beach that is most at risk from this project, I just wanted to really reinforce for the board that it's absolutely also in your purview to require that for the protection of the town land and to also hold them accountable through the license, the same way that the Conservation Commission would hold them accountable through the order of conditions for that mitigation sand to protect town property. So just from a conceptual standpoint, I wanted to make that point, and hopefully that will be infused in, in any license. To Malcolm's point earlier about the difference in the time for makeup sand versus the time of the license and the permit, I think that absolutely the Select Board through the license could require that the makeup sand be provided in a five-year timeframe to go along with the period of this license, and that would still certainly be in compliance with the order of conditions. So that's something that the Select Board could consider and discuss. And then finally, I think maybe along with one of Mr. Rose's comments, one of the things that I see that seems to be missing in the discussion of escrow is some additional contingency or backup for maintenance or cost of mitigation for multiple years if there's a time at which mitigation is no longer being provided, and there's a delay before either there's a removal or something else happens, because as you heard, that can be quite expensive and could be really burdensome on the town. So I think that working that, some kind of contingency for the maintenance or mitigation sand is also really important. Thank you.
Thanks, Emily. Clearly, there's room for more public input on this as well. And I'm starting to be convinced that the floor of town meeting is not the place for that, for that.
Yeah.
For this to be ironed out.
Yeah, we don't want to be making things up at town meeting. We shouldn't, we can't be making them up. We mess up enough when we make them up here. If we make them up at town meeting, it'll be worse. So I think that's, yeah.
So I'm, I don't know about anyone else, but I'm being persuaded that not trying to accomplish this at annual town meeting makes the most sense. I'm open to being persuaded the other direction. Dawn?
No, I mean, I'm fine with continuing it to the fall. I still think we could make that decision right before town meeting. But, I mean, the reality is here, and I know that there are trust issues, but the license is the executive board's job. It's not something that should be debated in detail at town meeting. But I do agree that having something more solidified will help inform the voters.
Yeah. It could change.
Just a clarification. Yeah, one thing that Bert said was, you know, we're voting on the license, and I think Dawn sort of hit it, but I'll make it more, you know, more direct, is that they are not, the town meeting is not voting on the license. So we don't have to go back to revote on the license. That's in our purview. They're voting on whether this can happen or not. So they're two, you know, it's sort of, I just want to make sure people are clear that that's the process, not.
Right. But I think town meeting has to understand what our intention is when they vote us permission to execute a license.
Yes.
So I think the more information we have in terms of where we're headed or what the framework of that is going to look like, obviously, the details get worked out by us. But without that trust of where we're headed, I don't think we're going to get very far at town meeting, so.
Yeah, I think politically, I think, you know, waiting, politically, I think waiting makes sense, but that means, but we still have to work on this.
Right.
Like, my concern is that, you know, that everything else will get in the way, and we'll be and we'll be two months away from, you know, fall town meeting and not have it figured out again. So, so regardless of what happens, you know, how do you keep the, we have to find some way to keep the pressure on to make sure that, you know, that the agreements are made and the public is heard and the, you know, and the different protections are in place for both sides that we can agree on. I think that, and that's going to take a fair amount of, a fair amount of work and a fair amount of time, and it, and it can't be put, you know, put off and put off. So how do we ensure that we, that that happens if we do, you know, anyway?
And I also want to respect the fact that town administration has a lot of work to do between now and May 3rd, and for us to, like, fast-track this for an unlikely final outcome in the timeframe that we have seems unfair also in terms of utilization of human resources across the town. So Meredith, did you want to add something?
Just pull that mic down for me. I'm so short, sorry. We are supportive of, obviously, if the Select Board feels that the fall town meeting is the appropriate venue, we also would be happy to try and coordinate for a public event, potentially maybe on the 28th at a location here on the island, to host a community conversation and discussion in general about the G O2 project and the expansion, as well as about the license, in advance of potentially the next opportunity. Not saying that that's going to rush us or need us to get to the May town meeting, again, but just maybe provide an opportunity that we'd be happy to host, and hopefully Vince would be available to attend. But we're, we're happy to coordinate that.
So.
That suggestion, that kind of thing feels a little more like it may be successful to me, that we, that feels better, you know, intuitively feels like it's a better path.
Yeah. So, so I'm inclined to make a decision tonight to table, but I don't know how anybody, anybody else, and sort of like, and then maybe establish a timeline for the group to come back to us with a revised draft. Vince?
If you're going to put it to another town meeting, I would suggest the same wording as last year, roughly speaking, that you move to take no action.
And then I guess maybe the, the chair and vice chair can work with Libby on putting this on an agenda so that there's a firm deadline for review of another draft, and that way that keeps sort of the pedal to the metal, as it were, that you were referring to, Matt. Do we need to take an action on doing, proposing a revised motion for town meeting?
I mean, realistically, we can make the motion on the day of town meeting, but it, it doesn't, it still needs a vote of town meeting to table it, so, because it's already in the moron.
Yeah, we're working on the list of technical amendments. Hopefully it won't be very long, but there are a couple of things that will be, need technical amendments. So I would suggest that if you're ready to put forward a take no action, that we add it to the list of technical amendments.
Okay. And do you need an action by us to do that, or just by consensus? Is that all right?
I, I think, I think a vote would be good.
I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion. We table, and in a future meeting, put together a work plan to ensure that we, you know, that we are ready plenty, a few months ahead of time.
Can you say take no action?
Yes.
I'll second that.
Okay. Anybody want to comment, or?
And delegate to the chair and vice chair to set up a timetable.
Okay, all right. Is that good for you guys? Okay.
My comment is, I will probably vote against tabling it after a clot. You actually convinced me to, because we really don't need the licensing agreement. The licensing agreement is our decision. We need, the project needs a yes or no from the town. And I don't know what other information the town would have by the fall other than the license.
I'll give you, I can give you just one, Malcolm, if, if that's a question.
Sure.
We may have the various costs of the various scenarios that will play out if we don't do anything there, or we do this, or et cetera, which, which we have in some of our documents, but need to be updated and brought forward. And so I think there is information other than the license that, you know, should be supplied to the public so they understand, you know, what their choice, what impacts their choices may make, so.
Tom?
Yeah, I think it would also give a chance for, when the license is out there as a draft, for the public to digest it over time. And also, during the summertime, there's lots of civic association-type meetings, and I'm sure Vince will be attending those, and, and SBPF, and et cetera, and the information will get out there and say, oh, this, this is, this is what this is at this time. I'm, I just extremely, I know we're kind of going that way anyway, but extremely worried about this coming back at April 30th, and then it being out there for three days, and then only so many people watch our meeting. So I, I think this is a prudent course of action.
Okay. All right, we ready for a vote? Okay. On the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
And Malcolm's, no. Okay, so it's four to one. Okay. Thanks, everybody. Interesting discussion for sure. Thanks, Meredith, for your time tonight. I'm, I'm sorry, I can't.
The sand.
The next thing was the sand plan?
Yep.
Not done yet.
Can we push that over to 30?
I think we can, I think we can table it for now, because.
I think it's really important for us to try to at least discuss that, because I think that that is, you know, SBPF did not appeal, but the, the two individuals that did appeal, it was really only focused on this one condition, and we think that this condition can be addressed. Obviously, SBPF had issues with this condition, and we think that it could at least be addressed by having a discussion about the sand plan, because it is something that is required to get eventually filed with the Conservation Commission. And so if we could discuss that, that's obviously something that we would appreciate the Select Board's time.
Okay.
Brooke?
Yes, I was going to ask Mr. Pucci.
Yeah, I would recommend against discussing the sand plan. The commission issued an order, you had town council attend a couple of their last hearing sessions on this. I consulted with Vince. My opinion was very clear on the legality of the commission's order regarding sand. And, and I would recommend that you hold off on discussing anything related to that, because you have a pending order from your Conservation Commission, which was voted in the form of the Order of Conditions. And unless and until, and I don't anticipate this happening, but unless and until the Select Board decides it does not want to support an order of the, of the commission, after all the work that they put into that, I, I would be surprised at that. So I, I would recommend at least not discussing or questioning anything related to that condition that the commission imposed. If the board wanted a legal opinion about, you know, the, the soundness of that condition, I'd be happy to provide it to you. I provided it to the commission during their hearing, so I, my recommendation would be for the Select Board not to discuss the condition in the commission's order of conditions.
Can I put a point of clarification?
Hang on, Meredith, please. Mr. Pucci, do, do we have the authority to amend the order of conditions?
No, absolutely not.
Yeah, okay. So, so Meredith, I'll let you comment, but we have a recommendation from town council.
But town, town council is misconstruing what we're asking. So there's a complete misunderstanding of what we're asking. So let me make sure that we all understand what we're asking, and then potentially town council can clarify.
Okay, we, we've been advised not to discuss it, so.
Can I just, I think it's fair for us to at least articulate what we're asking.
Okay. Meredith, please. I'm going to ask the board, we've been advised by town council, I'm going to ask the board whether they want to follow town council's recommendation.
I mean, can we just not hear the request?
Yeah, I think we can hear, I would, I'm comfortable hearing her comments. I'm not as comfortable with us debating them, or, we don't want to be, we don't want to be in a situation where we are adversarial with our own town board, as, you know, we've done that, and it doesn't, you know, doesn't work out very well. And so I, you know, I think that, but I think hearing what, you know, Meredith has to say, I think is fine, myself.
I would just interject, Matt respectfully, and, and Brooke, you know, I never will interject myself, I speak when spoken to, but I, I actually would respectfully recommend against that, if, you know, a representative of SBPF has things to say about sand, and then you don't have a chance to respond, and certainly I'm not going to go for tit-for-tat with it, it is a bad, in my opinion, it is not something that's appropriate for your discussion in this open session with them to make representations, and then that has to just get left on the record without the board being able to respond. And, and I, in my opinion, it intrudes into the, you know, the jurisdiction and the decision-making that the commission went into. And unless and until you want to, you know, delve into those issues later on after a further opinion or a discussion with SBPF, that's fine. But I would recommend against, you know, a party being able to speak to this, and then the board is left in the position of either correcting the record or leaving statements out there that are potentially adverse to what the commission decided.
I withdraw my comment. I stand corrected. I was wrong.
Okay, all right. So the consensus of the board, I believe, is that we not entertain a discussion on this at all, Meredith. So, based on advice from town council, so we'll just, we'll leave it at that. Where are we?
Committee reports.
Committee reports.
Committee reports.
Anyone have any committee reports?
Okay. Yeah, I think we just completed the road show for Island Home today. Congratulations.
No, I, I just, sorry.
I was just going to say, hopefully, everybody's talking about it.
Yeah. And just for this, for this board to know, I submitted a question to Libby about primary use ADUs. There's kind of a couple of different understanding of it going around, and I would, I'm hoping that we can get a opinion and a, you know, sort of, an understanding from town council prior to town meeting so that we don't spend an hour and a half, two hours on this issue before we even get the short-term rentals. But I want this board to know that that is, that I've made that request, so I want to.
Anybody else, or a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thanks, everybody, for listening, and have a good evening.